There we go, now bring that other up.
Yes.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
Okay.
Good.
Yep.
They recall the um twenty twenty five local county council budget hearings. Remember the record show all numbers are present? First department on the agenda is Parks Office and as everyone's aware, Kami is at training.
Shay, we can't find financial in this system, so we didn't log into it.
So they have the represented here this morning. So does everybody have a chance to read that budget coming down the line?
Thank you.
Yes.
I want to mention that there was no election this year, which is why there is such a huge difference in on the election budget from twenty five to twenty six.
And postage I see on another one, I am more further back.
On hers?
No, not in this one, but in the general.
Oh. Oh, well postage went up to seventy four cents. Post all our postage is paid out of the commission.
Reminder on the wages when it shovels the different percentages, that's because we have longevity footage, some of those. Some people get a different longevity amounts. And so those should all be correct throughout the budget unless it's noted asking for a hundred and three percent, which is what we basically told the department heads to begin with, you know, three percent and half. That's if we can do that with the budget this year, so.
So are we, are you going to page by page or?
Yes.
Cause I had a question.
Page four, Mary.
Yeah, the service contracts.
I have the circled also.
Well, so when there's a non-election year, we're just maintaining our service contracts, but now she's gonna pay um micro vote to to program all her machines, she's gonna use all eighty machines. I'm assuming, okay, I mean, that's the only thing I can think of. Um Lori used to program all my machines, obviously Lori's been retired for a while now. Um but I would say that that service contract includes what she's gonna pay the micro vote. And that's programming machines, and in the last couple of elections, she's only needed to program maybe ten. I mean, in a municipal, but now she'll use all eighty machines.
How many?
Eighty.
Eight?
Yeah, so um that'll be part of that. And then, I mean, those are just fees that kind of go up a little bit when you actually have an election.
Sure.
So I mean, overall, there is a big increase, obviously, from adopted in twenty five, twenty six thousand five hundred, two thousand. Again, that's because of elections.
But if you go back to twenty four, you'll see she actually spent eighty nine, six, seven, three. That in twenty four, that's what was actually spent, okay?
Oh yeah.
And twenty five is what she was budgeted because we don't know what she's gonna actually spend yet. And that's the increase, so it's really only about what fifteen thousand dollars above what was spent during an actual election.
Any other questions on page four? Page five. Again, I think the increases are reflective of an election year twenty six. Questions on that? Page six. Shelly, the office supplies again is just a reflection of the election.
Well, the office supplies that Kami has in there are are not because of the election, but she has a fund that is um perpetuation fund. And that's not county general, so she's gonna buy something big or the court's incentive fund, those are outside of county general. And anything to do with child support, she could buy under that incentive fund, and that would be approved. And the other one, she just has the ability to spend perpetuation money that we wouldn't have to spend out of the general fund. So those are just outside of the general. And I'd like everybody to budget money that's outside of the general for some supplies, so that we're not buying them all. I mean, for one thing, like Kami's money is so restricted.
You still have the supplies, keeping a lot of stuff here that departments.
In those two black cabinets and. But you know, it's just like being married, you know, somebody goes in and they take the last of something and then somebody else comes in and says, you know, there's not any of them. And I said, well, there were three of them the last time I looked. It's like having a man in your house all the time. Who can't remember to tell you that he used the last of anything.
Well, my son just reappears, I don't know.
Yeah, there you go. You got the perfect woman.
When you have baby servants too?
I'm pretty sure though that she'll let you know when you're wrong.
And as far as salaries, they're all within the three percent, I believe, correct?
Yes. Yes. Um when you go back to the end of all these, there's a spreadsheet like this. And that's the spreadsheet I gave everybody showing the three percent. So some of them use those dollars and some of them did not. So uh but we send that out every year, so they kind of know where you're at. Um page seven.
What's the, what's how old are you on the um beginning of twenty twenty seven? Why is that noted in there? Is that?
Oh, because she'll get longevity in twenty twenty seven, okay? So I I made those notations when I started doing this because every year, if you don't, every year you gotta go back to somebody's start date if they don't have longevity to see where they should be at and when they start. So that's just a cheat sheet for my office that we know. And I know this won't surprise you when I say it, but you know, sometimes I make a mistake on those. And you're gonna find that at your next council meeting, the mistake I made, cause I have to have an additional preparation. Or I have to quit paying Nicole over here. And by the end of these three days, you're gonna realize why I pay Nicole.
We realize that already.
Okay, there you go. And just think how much nicer she is in this.
Any other questions on that, on this, on this, this increase? It's something I think we can come back and take a look at, you know, if we need to um adjust some.
And that is some things that I mark on some of these budgets, um and not for any reason other than like her mileage and her printing came up. Like five hundred dollars in in each, and I don't know why, because she's still got money left, but I mean Kami's not here to ask her why those are. Um and I made little notes on mine about all those, but anything that's significant, Nicole can easily look it up to see what their balance is and how much they've spent. So that we know. And I know last year when you went through all these things, you took a little overtime away from everybody just so they had some teeth in the game. Um and I'm telling you right now, most people have stayed within that. I'm not, and you guys would know that, because if they have to have a transfer into their overtime, it has to come before you, or if they get an additional, it has to come before you. So I know you asked about comp time, and I'm I'm assuming the town does do comp time. And I'm just gonna re-initiate, I I hate comp time. I've never had a comp time, I don't use it. When I took this office as the auditor, I was very clear with the staff that I don't get comp time. So go home. Now, if you have to stay over because there's somebody standing at your counter, I'm gonna pay for it or however we have to work it out. But just because you can't get your desk cleaned all the time to go home, I'm not paying you for that. So the bad thing about comp time, and we we find that we cannot control it, people do not control it. They let people use, don't take a lunch and they get comp time, they let people, everybody for lunch.
Why why are you working, you know, come in early because, oh, I worked some time off and I don't really have enough and so.
I respect that.
So I am not a component of comp time, I know that Casey asked about it.
Is that?
The flex time, I'm okay with the flex time, you have to use that within the pay period.
Well, the problem.
I think the the problem with doing away with the comp time at least, back to the search department is, you know, they're gonna generate.
Yep.
Money. And and this is what I said from the beginning when they, I I was here when they did away with overtime before because.
We didn't have any money.
There was a lot of, there wasn't money, so we went to comp time. And now we've done away with that, and now the budget's getting tighter again, so you know, you gotta do something.
Right.
And so.
But each department head has to be strong enough to control that comp time.
And.
And honestly, we have departments that like people and they think, oh, it'll be okay, just get it used.
Well, we've had, we had an issue with um, you know, department head that was getting comp time that should have never, I mean, in our rules and regulations, it was not. Eligible for comp time, but they were allowed to generate it. That's that's when all this started.
I'm just curious, has department heads ever done a survey with their employees on which they prefer? I'd ju- I'd like to know what that balance would be.
I never asked my people, I just told them.
Yeah, and I I get that, but I, for the fairness of the.
I told you, I told you nicely though, didn't I? Yeah, see?
Mm-hmm.
Think, I, I mean, my gut feeling is most people would prefer comp time because.
He said it.
Yeah, I think they would too.
Because, you know, you work for your, a year and get five days off, and people like the ability to to get comp time and then.
Yeah, that's.
Right.
The one.
And the way that was managed by us, you know, we did not allow you to take comp time.
Okay, that's fine, that's what makes it so.
If we had to pay somebody overtime to cover. You know, it was only when we had adequate shift that we would allow you to take comp time. If it was vacation or personal days, we would pay for somebody to cover that, but not for comp time. But the problem is in some of these departments that are small, and that person's, you know, that that affects the operation of the department, so to speak, so.
Well, and in most instances, instances, if something is not abused, it works, but if it starts being abused, that's why things have to change.
And I know it puts a lot more back on the supervisors and and department heads as far as keeping track of that. I know that that's a burden for them, but I was just curious on the other. Anyway, um I guess that's neither here nor there at this point, I guess, but.
Well, I did learn the probation department, I think it's kind of wide though, they have ten days now to take their flex time.
Yeah, it's kind of wide now.
It's kind of wide, okay.
And we did that because if you were a thirty seven and a half hour person, you had to use it from Friday to Thursday.
Yeah.
And even with jury trials, that became kind of a problem for those people, for the law, the court staff and stuff. So the commissioners amended the the handbook to say now you have to use it in the pay period. And and people are still gonna have to get paid. If Thursday's the last day of the pay, and they got a jury trial that runs over till seven o'clock at night. I mean, there's no day to use that flex time, but that's gonna happen, and you just, you suck it up by the cut, I mean.
It's, it's kind of, so anyway, I saw Teresa.
Teresa?
Yeah, so we might as well order ahead and get her started.
If that's okay, everybody did what.
Yeah, we'll.
And Casey, basically, we run through them, we ask our questions, and then Wednesday or Thursday, I guess, you know, we circle back and then go through. And so a lot of the budgets are pretty simple.
Yeah.
So we spend a lot of time, obviously, on the caterers.
Provisional, obviously.
I've I've already got my questions answered, so I've, yeah. I actually last, no, I'm, I don't care, not two years ago, I learned a lot from here, so. It has to be.
Um I want you to note that the planning commission board is getting a raise. That's yellowed on your page eight.
Uh, page H L.
It's not the whole page, just.
Where where's the yellow page?
Yeah.
Oh, really? Well, I have yellow, so maybe I missed your yellow.
It's pink, where's that?
No, the pink is the uniforms, it is, I gotta put my glasses on, it's one five three oh three. Planning Commission Board members. They've marked that as a raise.
Do you want that equals out too? Is that like?
I don't know how many board members there are, so I couldn't figure it. I'm sorry.
I sit on it and I'm like.
But it is a thousand seventy increase, and I don't know if that means everybody's getting twenty five dollars, everybody's in town, I don't know. And I never called Teresa to ask her, so.
Sorry, I had, I had an appointment in my office and.
Morning.
Morning. Morning.
I didn't get rid of him, good morning. How's everybody today?
Good morning. How are you?
Nice wet day, I'm good. Um. I don't know that we had any changes to our budget except one question, Shelley, I don't know if you can tell us how much we've taken out of overtime?
Yeah, hang on, we can tell you how much we spent.
Yeah.
The staff typically will take um two hours off. Instead of trying to get that, some of the meetings are longer than two hours, but they'll try to bank a plan to have those couple of hours off. So they don't take as much comp time.
Five thirty eight eighty. So you've only spent five hundred thirty eight eighty?
This year.
Yep.
And that's because the girls are taking a time off.
You've got twenty four, twenty four hundred left.
Yeah, so we lowered that for next year. I'm not, I didn't think what we, what we have in our budget might actually be high. I do have a little cheat sheet. With some comments that might help understand where we're going. Shelley, you have my um longevity and my overall salaries after that, so it'd be sixty three one one nine five seven.
Yes. Yeah, everybody who has longevity is all, it's part of their budget now, it's no longer part of both.
Correct, I was just making sure I had my figures correct.
Yeah. Well, okay. Yep.
Okay, and I think you rounded it up to one twenty.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Did you round that up to sixty three one twenty?
I I always round up, okay? We're not, we're not doing pennies.
Okay. Just make it your own. And then last year when we came to you code enforcement, you had put them in at the same salary level as um our deputy planner. And that did not accidentally transition into this year's budget. So it looks like there's more. That we're asking for out of that budget this year. But it should have been the same as what we're asking for from last year.
Yeah, Teresa.
Um code enforcement and deputy planner.
So it was forty three oh oh three, and that's a wrong number, you're saying?
It should, they both should be forty five, four ninety six.
Forty five.
That's what you approved last year, that they both should have been forty five, four ninety six last year.
This year, or this year.
For, yes, for this salary, yes.
This year, alright, forty five, four ninety six.
Both of those. Oh, okay, I see.
And it was just an oversight, and we've been working within that. Rachel's still not at full salary, she has earned a little bit of an increase in paying. But I promise you, we would do that incrementally with her as she starts earning more and more of her responsibilities.
And all the other salaries within the three percent, correct?
Yes. We did ask for a little bit more for planning commission meetings, we're proposing to have probably at least one potential large project come through um the county. If that's the case, we're gonna have to have extra meetings. Some of these meetings, we had alcohol holdings, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, it was a lot of while in the company, it was trying to come in a couple of years ago. And. A petition looked down to face up an entire meeting. And it's not fair to the other landowners that are trying to get on that board. So we're gonna try moving some of those meetings onto a separate meeting.
Can you tell me how many board members are on that, on the planning commission?
My word, you're gonna make me count. Um. Shelley, I think there's nine board members, Everett, the attorney. And then we have John Metzger and Jason Gardi as alternate board members, they get paid for four meetings a year. And I'm gonna tell you, they both, they'll show up even though they're not being paid. And John was just in my office trying to make sure he was clear on a project we've got coming up this next meeting. So they're, we've got a very professional board, they're interested in understanding what's going on. Um. Everett Newman had a salary increase with the planning commission, I think we talked about it a little bit, so that's an increase for him on his budget from thirteen seventeen hundred. We have um an eight hundred dollar increase in our um dues and subscriptions for Adobe. Whether that goes through us sending a claim to somebody to keep that account paid, whether it's Gary Leatherman who said I could use his credit card or IT. Um IT did not want it in their budget, we don't mind having it in our budget. But we need someone to put it on a credit card, we can't.
So what's.
And I do have a county credit card, I have two. But I don't want anything just automatically hitting that county credit card. So, and I don't think they've set it up that way. But sometimes when um Sarah or Rachel call and wanna use my county credit card, I don't have the credit on my credit, because the whole county's using it. I mean, I have two of them, but one of them we use for supplies and then. And then the other one we use, people use to book overnight stays for conferences and things like that, so sometimes if it hits wrong, um.
Then you gotta make it bounce, and I get that.
Right, I I I just can't put it on my card.
And I think that's why IT took, T took it last year. We usually do get notifications that it's getting ready to come out, that they're gonna withdraw it, but.
Right, I I, because it's not my personal credit card, I'm not into automatic yearly things that I can't remember for God's sake, so.
And I don't think it's appropriate to put it on my personal credit card.
And we don't either.
I still don't think that's appropriate.
Here, I just. Okay, we had talked about that on the last.
Yeah. Yeah, IT didn't want it in their budget, but somebody's gotta help us with a credit card, cause I don't know how to do that. Gary Leatherman said I could use his credit card for the county, um and, but I don't know, we talked with Shelley on how we work the claim situation for that, but it is in my budget. And I guess I'll figure out, we will a for it. If we do it under Gary next year, maybe I'll be a new customer and they'll give me a rate for the first year, sometimes.
There you go.
Cause everything that I use with force coffee, they bomb, so.
And I think the only thing Gary uses his credit card for is when they go to conferences or something, so I mean, his credit card's probably a lot more open than mine.
I mean, referring to credit cards, just.
I had no problem putting on our credit card. The problem I have is I think that soft, that document needs to be converted to something else, so we don't have to pay eight hundred dollars a year for software just to be able to edit it. That's my concern. So I don't have a problem putting it on the credit card if you guys say that we need to pay for that software. But I honestly think that document can be converted to something else, it doesn't require us to own, to pay for an Adobe subscription every year just to be able to edit it.
But wasn't it the past documents were the problems, you, I think you brought that up, converting all the other past documents.
You can, it can be whackable to convert it sometimes, and we've actually tried to do that and saw that it's, it was not very easy to do.
Very difficult.
The other side of that too is you do have imagery and things like that in there that can easier be recreated, um the higher home towns would do that with our ordinance the last time. And they were very happy that we were working with Adobe, cause it was very easy for them to manipulate those um images for us.
That's what I, I mean, again, if you guys think it's worth the eight hundred bucks a year, then we'll just put it on the credit card. But my concern was to kind of just say, let's evaluate what we're doing here, because nobody else is using Adobe, we've been able to get Adobe out everywhere else.
Is that something, Dave, when you're, uh, I think we meet with you later today, is that today?
About an hour.
Is that something that uh we can talk about at that point?
Yeah.
I'd like to be in on that conversation, cause that, it, this, this is a, a county document that the county spent over sixty thousand dollars just to have this document done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And to, to hope that by converting it to another uh form, that we don't whackable and miss something. Cause that did happen with our last um thing that we did with hometown, there was one area that we found out like two months later that accidentally, no one knows how they accidentally took that out of that document. So I'm, I'm worried, that's my main concern, is not messing up something that we already have.
Correct, and I. Right, I, I get it, I mean, I think we've all been there where we've converted or hopefully converted something and there was issues, so.
Yeah.
Um but um, let's uh, I mean, we're not, or I'm not saying taking it off the table by any stretch, Teresa, but.
No, no.
But you say, just let me know, I mean, it's really your decision to make, so.
Yeah, but I, we, we're about out, I mean, I guess now it's censuring here anyway, it's just.
Can we do both the first year?
Well, I, again, the conversion's gonna take time, once you convert it, it's like anything, you're either gonna use the Adobe version or you're gonna use the other version of it. Um you don't wanna keep both of them, because that's where you end up getting mismatches, when you try to keep two documents together.
And the beauty of this version, if I'm the only one in my office that has Adobe, no one else can mess it up, it's gonna be my fault.
Well, yeah, like I said, that's real, it's your call, I mean, cause you guys are the ones that are authorizing the money.
I think.
I don't find any security problems with Adobe or anything.
I think, I think I'd side with her.
And I don't mind trying to see if we can find a way to convert it to something else, but I'm very nervous about doing it.
Yeah, like. Pay the. Pay, pay the first year and try it while you're doing it. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I, I don't, I can't say for sure, but I, like I said, everywhere else we've gotten rid of Adobe, because Adobe is just bloody expensive. Eight hundred bucks a year.
But were those other accounts housing something like the union?
A sixty thousand dollar document.
Right.
Well, again, the value of the documents, not we're talking, we're talking about the format of the document, right? Cause the value of the documents, the information's been put in it, not actually the document itself.
What else could it be converted to?
Word. Microsoft Word is actually quite powerful.
Makes it easier to manipulate, and at the same time, that's a little cautionary.
So again, like I said, it, it's really up to you, I mean, we do buy custom tools for people when we can't find another way to do things. But people were using Adobe all over the place, and we just, we've, we've literally replaced it with a free tool for almost everybody. Now, I'm not saying in Teresa's case we would do that. But most everybody else is just doing things like taking Adobe and trying to change the page order, right? Well, you don't need to pay eight hundred dollars a year for a piece of software to do that. Um and I know she's managing relatively complex document, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, I think that, that's why, that I, I think it, it would be good to just take a peek at it and say, could this thing be put in a standard tool? And we can protect it so they can't get to it, we can, we, we have all kinds of security on our network to where only Teresa can get to a folder and stuff like that, so I'm not worried about somebody being able to edit it.
Could we move forward with what she wants to do for this next year, and then this next year you guys have a plan, maybe to cut that eight hundred dollars out? And if you, if you feel comfortable, you'd have a whole year?
I'm, I'm interested in looking at it.
Well.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not comfortable there yet, but.
Fair enough, that's fair.
Let's um, I mean, Teresa, if you, I mean, you've talked about this a couple of times to us, but um I'm hoping most everybody on here, so. If you would, maybe you can email us your bullet point on why you wanna keep this, and Dave, you can do the same, why do you wanna convert it?
Sure.
And we can move ahead and circle back to that a little bit.
I think mine's gonna be real simple, you've spent a lot of money for this document, and it's not worth the risk. I, yes, that's part of it, yeah.
Okay.
And then, you know, the other side of that too is, is how nice does it look once it's converted, it's probably not gonna look as nice as it does, but.
That would be my concern.
Okay. And you, oh, the other thing I wanted to ask about or point out, I guess, is, I know Shelley had sent us information on IRS audit regarding clothing allowances and that kind of thing.
But yes, it's.
And that's apparently is taxable. Did you have a conversation with her about that at all?
No, did they tax us on our last?
No, but the, the way.
They did.
It's.
We haven't not taxed you at all on any clothing, but we will be.
Okay. Internally or as we purchase?
Like if you bought a hundred dollars worth of clothes and Sarah got forty dollars and Rachel got sixty, we're gonna put that forty and sixty on their payroll, and they're gonna be taxed for it.
Oh, cause the only time we really have the clothing is what we use it for is like when we're out in field, we wanna have someone know who we are when we're out in field.
That's why you got this.
And that's, that's.
I'm telling you, I walked into an Amish property, I had a car, I had a shirt, I had a jacket, I had a business card in my hand, and they were still not comfortable with who I was.
Right, right.
I'm just saying though, for the IRS, you gotta be taxed for it.
And the reason is the auditor's office will then get fined if they're not doing. Any progress with that, and it happened apparently in Cal County, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Get an IRS audit.
Yeah.
Okay.
And personally, I don't agree with that, but that's the limit, it is.
He really don't agree with it, just so you know.
I'm not, I just, I just. So the, if this is a new IRS system?
No, it's not a new IRS, we just never followed it, right.
Okay.
But now I know about it.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, if I didn't know, I wouldn't care, cause I wouldn't know.
Well, we're out in the field quite a bit, and I think it's important that the girls, when we're out in field, that they have a shirt on.
I agree, but I, I, I mean, it's just, it is what it is, so that's gonna.
If it has a cap and logo on it. Well, that'll be their decision then.
Yeah.
If they want to get a new shirt, they're gonna pay the taxes for the shirt.
Well. Correct.
And you're gonna bring us the receipt that says this much went to Rachel, this one's went to you, this much went to Sarah, whatever.
Starting this year?
Like now.
Okay.
Anything you buy from now on.
Okay.
You know, like if it was a hundred dollar hardware building, what that tax, what their.
We just did a lot.
Whatever your, whatever you pay tax, whatever your tax level is. So it'll be an adjustment on your pay, and we'll show it as a hundred dollar adjustment, and then you get taxed on it.
We just sure as hell like it, income.
It's, it's that. Yeah, it is income.
It's in income.
It's just like having a take home card, when, when you don't really need one, you're not in the room, it's a personal, but you thought you have one. You're gonna pay, I'm, you, do you get a take home card from the school? It'd be a three dollar a day fee, you know, or it should be. So.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any questions?
No, I think we kept our budget pretty low. If you see on the colored sheet that I sent you, you can see how tight we're kind of running our budgets and not spending much at the end of the year.
And there's a whole bunch to add to your binder right there, if you guys want.
And could we have one of those too, please?
Yes, I'll make you one cuz I think I wrote online.
A whole bunch.
No, the paper. Yeah, you can make me one.
I'll, I'll get you one.
But if they're getting one, we need one for our five.
Yeah, I I I should know that.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you, good job.
You're welcome, sorry.
That's a great tree.
You got Mike next?
Yep.
Yep.
I'll be all out of you.
Well, he was standing out there.
Okay, thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just wanna mention, she did a great job. Max, do you want a whole bunch?
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning. Morning, how are you?
I'm doing good.
Craig, think about bringing your three ring binder back that you're using.
I don't know, we can set it here.
And that's like, okay.
There we go!
It's a nice binder.
Yeah, we're gonna let Brandon be the, the, the.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay. Building department.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna go ahead and uh?
Present my case.
Sure.
This is the second year I've done it, so, still in the process, but but basically, um, the budget, we we cut a couple of things out, legal applications. And uh, due to subscriptions, I think, yeah, so, uh, we, there's an extra three hundred here. Um, the increases are are the uh, suggested uh, pay increases, and then the one I really wanna talk about is the per diem, which is floodplain management. Um, and why that request is in there, but.
What's that for?
It's for floodplain management, so um, the history of floodplain management, I'll just jump into it. It's it's, it's a big responsibility. Bestgillman used to do it, I can't, they couldn't tell me what year. And then it went to Dick Adair, and then it went to Steve Kirkpatrick. After a year, he refused it, went back to Dick Adair. And then when he retired, it went to Norm. And then Kenneth Hughes come in and he would only take it if he got an uh, an extra ten thousand a year on salary, which they gave it to him. And then when he left, it was nobody for a short time. Then it was Jennifer who was, I guess, in planning for a couple, uh, couple weeks. Uh, then it went to Norm and and Lori and Terry as it per, it got changed to per diem, I don't know when. And so it's to compensate for the extra responsibilities, floodplain management. Okay, so this is my, I've been doing floodplain since Norm retired a year and a half ago, the over. Um, I've been, me and Terry have been uh, doing.
Oh, so the floodplain, that that amount is for two people, two cases.
Yeah, and last year it was five thousand, five thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's just like a?
It's a requirement to have, if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a requirement that we have somebody oversee the flood uh, plain management. And when Kenneth was doing it, that was, he was on contract and and that was included in his contract and then.
But what are you overseeing? Like, what do you do? Just like FEMA's involved when you get.
Yeah, so in order to participate in the flooding, uh, national flood insurance program where people that live in floodplains, they get a discount on flood, they have to have flood insurance. It's a man's mandatory, so the.
If you have a mortgage.
Pardon?
If you have a mortgage?
I guess, you're right, it's, and so there's a discount for them. I don't know if it's a federal grant or whatever, uh, if the county participates in a national flood insurance program, which means that there are certain restrictions. Build in floodplains or do work in floodplains that they have to follow and we have to oversee that. We have to make sure that if they're in a floodplain, if they build, they have to build above flood protection grade. And we have to keep, we have to have on file elevation certificates and all that. So it's it's managing to make sure people that are building or modeling floodplains are following the guidelines in order to be able to participate in the national flood insurance program. Does that explain?
Well, yeah, I mean, I under, I get it, I understand it. I hate that on the real estate side, to be honest with you, cuz you only can do one addition on a floodplain type thing, which makes no sense to me, but nonetheless.
If if it's, if it's, well, that's only if it's not elevated. You can do a one-time alteration at fifty percent of value. If you elevate it, you can spend as much as you want, build it as long as it falls within the planning commission's guidelines for setbacks and.
Right.
So does that happen a lot, I mean, in Noble County? Do we have a lot of floodplains?
Unfortunately, and and here's, here's the, yeah, again, I've been, this has been learning experience.
Like the ditches that, how they're, they're floodplain to.
Um, we, we had to have mandatory training in order by twenty twenty five.
In council.
That's crazy. We got, Terry and I did that twenty twenty four. We learned at that meeting down in Indianapolis that Noble County was on the verge of getting their, their flood, national flood protection program. So that would have meant, DNR would have went to FEMA, they don't like going to FEMA, so we we learned that, okay, so. Um, so it was coming upon us to do a better job of making sure we enforce our flood ordinance in Noble County. And so we built up a pretty good relationship, I believe, in the last year and a half with them. And uh, and so, but we wanna maintain it, and I will say from going through the flood ordinance, that um, there's some interpretation involved there, but uh, we have, in order to make sure that we don't get into violations, the ordinance needs updated. Um, and 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 primarily in the compensatory storage um, requirement that has been put in there. FEMA doesn't require compensatory storage. Uh, I contacted the state, the state doesn't require it, but it's a benefit if you did it. Whoever really put the compensatory storage in there, which the state usually sends you what they like to have in your ordinance, and it was in there, in that, as a recommendation, but on small layups, it's it's physically impossible to um, to, in my mind, to build on small lots with this compensatory storage requirement. Because any dirt, anything you do to raise that, that involves dirt, you have to remove dirt on that lot somewhere. It's physically impossible, so in my mind, whoever wrote wrote that didn't want anybody building in the flood. I'm giving you my opinion, I just written, okay? So, so at the end of the day, we wanna make sure we don't lose our national flood insurance program benefits, uh, cuz the the taxpayers that have, you know, have this insurance that they would do, be a big increase in insurance bills. So from that management point, it is a, it's a big responsibility, and, you know, I, going through the files, you know, we've had the West Lakes especially. You know, people file complaints, basically, you know, they say that Noble County is not following our ordinance. And if you follow it to the strict letter of the law, they were correct, and so I'd like to get that corrected, so. Put the county at risk and also, if, I'd like to be able to give the homeowners some more latitude in raising their homes. And and being able to do that and not have to to try to follow this, this compensatory storage requirement, cuz it's all, you can't always raise a home without doing it, so. I don't know if I may, you know, maybe.
So the ordinance you're talking about, we'll go through the commissioners, we rewrite the ordinance.
Yeah.
With you involved, obviously, and then.
Yeah.
Um, so on, so is that in the works now? I mean, have you talked to the commissioners?
I had a little sideline chat with Terry and said, hey, I just, I just wanted to get a feel from the commissioner's side, is this something that they're, uh, would, that they would consider? Because as a floodplain manager, the compensatory storage is, is, again, hardly anybody could build and follow that rule to the T. It's this is, it's just physically impossible.
Mike, is it, is it safe to, is it safe to say that the floodplain probably consumes most of your time as you're in your department?
When there's a, when there's a, uh, when we get a letter from the DNR, it involves a lot of our time, but my normal day-to-day job, it doesn't involve um, you know, most of my time. When somebody comes in, and we have people right now that are applying for, you know, building a floodplain, we always have that. Almost every week, we'll have permits that are being processed or in in the, in the process of being processed. So it does consume most of my time, but there's, and and mainly because all the other permits do. But it's one that we can't, we can't ignore because, like I said, we were on the verge of losing it based on my conversation with the DNR and our, and our training down in Indy in twenty twenty four. And they don't, you know, they don't want us to lose it, so I think we had five or six violations, and after three, they're supposed to go to FEMA and and report it. And, but they did, they were being, being very hard. So, but I'd really like to get that, that ordinance updated, so we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Some about violating our, our ordinance.
So the increase in, for the budgets, just for the extra work that, of getting that prepared and stuff?
Yeah, and again, the reason it had, there hasn't been a lot of time devoted to it because the, you know, the permitting and, cuz I also, you know, I'm doing inspections and. But I do wanna give you a positive, some positive news, um, in terms of the the budget and what what's been done in twenty twenty five. And this is just, we we revamped our fee schedule for permits because it hadn't been updated since two thousand thirteen, I think, thirteen or fifteen. And so we updated that and got fees to a, a, a deep, a more practical, common sense level. And and as of year to date, um, and I have an hour, just a copy, that Terry put together, a summary. But we issued two hundred and sixty-one permits as of July the, or August the eleventh. Um, in twenty twenty five, we did two hundred and six, did I say it's two sixty-one? We did two sixty-six last year, so we're almost identical. Um, we have uh, increased our, our uh, our receipts, twenty-four thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents year to date. And uh, and with the increase of fees over last year. By the end of the year, we'll be around forty-one thousand additional fees collected for permits, and that just gets us to a level where we, where we really need to be. For example, thirty-five dollars our minimum permit fee, and some of those inspections would require two, three, four bids, like you can't cover your cost for that. So the minimum got bumped up to fifty and, and then all the other different types of inspections were increased to a level, or at least it covers our, our, you know, our, our time and our and our fuel to do that, so again, we're at a positive twenty-four thousand four hundred year to date. And we'll be closer to forty-one thousand at years end if things keep going. So I say that to help, you know, you all help make a decision on whether the the increase in the budget is. So does it, we can do that.
The per diem, would it essentially be an extra thousand for each?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's, if I'm summarizing it correctly, would be in anticipation of the added work that's gonna be required to update the policy.
Yeah, and basically, the focus that we really need to to put on the, on this, on this responsibility, floodplain management. I mean, it's more than just issuing permits, and that's basically how we've managed, handled it over the years, we just make sure that when they're in a floodplain, uh, we have to issue a flood permit and we make sure to get elevation certificates in that, but right now, the ordinance needs updated. Um, and the other thing is, we're not involved in the CRS program, which is the community rating system. That gives the insurance holders in the flood additional discounts, but this requires a little bit more management time. It requires uh, FEMA or DNR, and we're coming in auditing uh, more frequently. And so, and I'm not, I I'm not, I I think it would be good for the insurance holders, uh, but I'm, I don't have a good feel yet for the extra workload. So I wanna, I'm gonna investigate that. I wanna get get hold of some counties that do it, um, uh, that are in this system, and Noble County isn't. And I don't think a lot of counties are, but I need to find out how much work for those participating, so it would be a benefit to our, our residents in the floodplains, but.
One other thing on the budget, Mike, that I wanted to point out, we're, we're not wear uniforms, and again, this is not something that I agree with. But uh, the IRS has had this rule for a long time, we haven't really followed it. Uh, there was an audit in DeKalb County recently that said, uh, that your uniforms, outside of basically law enforcement, nine-one-one, I think, maybe one or highway.
Highway.
Um, but that's taxable income for you and your people, so, um, the auditor, Shelley, is, we've talked about this quite a bit, so. The uniforms that you have yet, they have the logos on that you buy through the department, those are now considered taxable income by the IRS, so. Uh, if you have further questions on how that looks, you can give them to Shelley.
Just pass the buck, Doug, go ahead.
I did.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for the building department or any questions to us? All right, let's keep the ball rolling. Thank you, thank you.
Well, I guess I just wanted to interest too. Um, when there's a violation, that gets turned into DNR, I get an nasty letter. And uh, we were able, the first one I had to deal with, I was able to get rescinded because they didn't follow their, their own rules. Uh, but it did involve a lot of time, but we were able to skirt that one in, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Everybody, do you have to keep moving? Do we need a short break?
I'm good.
Okay. Morning, morning, how are you?
Good.
Go go ahead and uh.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't highlight Glenn's uniforms and I should have, okay?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's been, I don't know.
Yeah, he's, he's here now, so he is aware of it, but it's true.
Uh, where would you like to start? Um, you just wanna run, I mean, are your wages are all within the eight percent?
Yes.
The the recommended?
Yes.
If I ask a question, will you be offended?
Who, me?
I don't care about you.
No.
Um, your overtime and your permanent overtime, like in your overtime, you've spent half of it, or less than half of the seventy-five hundred. And I know your permanent overtime has changed some because you hired a full-time person, and it did go down a lot of money too. But even in that, you have spent forty-five hundred dollars so far this year.
Yes, and as long as I can find this paper. Um, overtime, we did start with seventy-five hundred, we've used three thousand twenty-two dollars and sixty cents. And we roughly have forty-five hundred that is remaining. Uh, Craig and I do have sixteen hours planned for this weekend. Uh, between what Craig earns and what I earn, uh, that'll be an extra eight hundred and eleven dollars coming out of that just this weekend. Uh, there's different types of projects that we have to perform over at the courthouse that are now going to turn into overtime. It'll be weekend jobs, um, such as changing the air filters twice a year. I don't know when the last time was. Anyone's been over there to look at some of those offices, but they are pretty small. And especially like with probation, when they have clientele in there, this is something we're not gonna be able to do throughout the work week, and.
How about those faucets that just come on? How about those faucets that just come on?
That's a good question. I'm still trying to figure out how to calibrate those appropriately, but those all.
I was meeting with probation after today in that room and all once a while it just.
The the one downstairs has been a little tricky. Um I don't know if it's a faulty G F I. There's some days to where that fails, I have to open it up, reset that.
Mm-hmm.
It's tied on to its own breaker. So there is a little name fridge that's right next to that, which I thought that was the culprit at first, it is not. But for some reason, there's a few issues with those drinking fountains.
This is the, yeah, the faucet in the restroom in that in that conference room. It's probation.
Not not the drinking fountain, it's an actual faucet?
No, it's the, that's what they said. I mean, we were just sitting in there and it was in the restroom and it just comes on.
Oh, um.
And runs.
That's it's it's called a purge. There there are a few of those faucets over there that were calibrated to purge every so often. I can't remember the timeframe on that. And the reason being is to keep hot water in the lines and also flush out whatever contaminants may still be in line. Cause some of those restrooms are so far away from the water source. So I'll have to contact current mechanical again to try and figure out exactly how they did that. But it's it's called a purge.
Okay, that's interesting, I cause they didn't seem to know that.
Yeah, and they 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 do flush their lines out every so often. I can't remember if it's once every other day or once every three days.
Hey Glenn, on that overtime, is that something second shift can't do on whether over there at the courthouse cleaning?
With their timeframe, I don't think they're gonna have a lot of time for that because they are going between the courthouse and the south complex. And then when we do start having snow removal, maybe they're gonna be helping out with that also. And that's where I would like to ask for additional funds towards overtime. Would be in case third shift employee needs to hang around a little longer to help us with snow removal. If we ever do have a normal winter again.
So how much have you spent in overtime this year?
Thirty thirty three hundred, three three thousand, I guess. Yes.
He's got almost forty five hundred left in his overtime budget for this year.
And then we'll be, hopefully we get out of there before sixteen hours. We're we're planning on two full days, Saturday and Sunday. That'll be in the additional eight hundred and eleven dollars coming out of our overtime. And then we'll have a few more projects similar to that that we will be performing before the end of the year.
And I mean, I know that like they cleaned the carpets over the weekend. I mean, you can't clean the carpets when we're all here. Um I don't know if you're cleaning waxing these floors, I don't know if these floors get waxed, so.
It'll be.
Real floors in the courthouse used to.
The the second story floor, that's something that we will be doing. Um we did purchase a burnisher, it's propane. Um it's pretty nice not having to chase the cord around or get tangled up in that cord. But we're gonna have to remove all the furniture from over there when we do need to re-wax that floor. And then we'll have to come in and buff it. Once every other week, we are going over there and burnishing that, trying to keep it shining.
Glenn, you've got increases in gas and oil and supplies. Um can you talk about that just briefly?
Um yes, I'm asking for an increase of three thousand dollars because our equipment is now being used by a third employee. That's more mileage along with wear and tear. Um just like everyone else, when we do have wear and tear, we have to take our equipment down to the highway department to be serviced. Um our zero turn mower here pretty soon is going to need both rear tires replaced. I've called Star Tire um up in Kendallville. We do have a account with them for those two rear tires. That's gonna cost two hundred and sixty dollars. Uh June twenty fifth of this year, the truck had a broken transmission coolant line. That repair cost roughly two hundred and seventy dollars. Also with the burnisher being propane driven and a fluctuation price of between two dollars and twenty five cents and two dollars and fifty cents per gallon, we're gonna have to fill that tank every so often.
I seen Craig out here, I did comment towards Craig that um I wanted to say that the grounds look amazing.
Thank you.
The courthouse looks amazing, uh everything's cut well, so I just wanna compliment you guys on that.
Thank you.
With the um uh information on the uniforms being taxable or taxable, do you still foresee an increase in the uniform budget for that?
Uh no, so my question is, how exactly does that pan out? We spend our money and then hand that in at the end of the year, right?
No, like if you spend the money out of this budget, okay?
So do we? Mm-hmm.
Like you guys get five shirts like you're wearing right there, okay?
I wish.
I know, but I'm just saying, you get five shirts and they embroider them and they charge you fifty bucks for yours and fifty bucks for Craig's. You bring us a copy of that receipt and then just like if you take the card home, we add it to your pay in a special line item, it's an adjustment to your pay and you'll pay taxes on it.
Okay.
So that's where the tax comes in, okay? So and any shirt like Brandon is wearing right now, and I know he probably pretended he worked this morning or whatever, but he didn't. Um but because he can wear that shirt anywhere he wants, that's considered taxable. Now, most guys, and I know Casey's shaking his head too, I get it. But like the guys at the sheriff's department, most of them aren't gonna go out to a party wearing their uniform. So that is not, but like this here jacket here that Nicole's got.
Yes.
It's got auditor on it. Now, I don't know that Nicole would wear it outside of this office, but they paid for it themselves, so it's not taxable. But if you're using county dollars to buy it, then it's considered taxable by the I R S.
Okay.
And it's just an adjustment on your pay line. Nicole would do it, but we'd have to have a copy of your receipts and who's getting what. So that you didn't have to pay for Craig's or vice versa.
Okay, I was I was also, you know, ideally, before I found out just a few months ago, was trying to also get Tim Phillips his shirts, cause he is jumping between buildings, middle of the night. Uh law enforcement sometimes stops us, asks us who we are, gotta flash him a badge, it's nice to have the embroidery, but.
And believe me, I don't think anybody on this board agrees with the I R S on what is how they're looking at it, but it is what it is.
I think if you went to uniform tops, like the highway has, the button up, actual that you're getting from a a uniform company, that may not be taxable, but these polo shirts are taxable.
Yeah, polo shirts. They're big ones.
Okay? Really, that's.
That's.
Because most guys wouldn't wear that stupid ugly gray shirt from the highway. Mark might have, okay, but most normal people would not have. I think that's a differential there, okay? Anything that you could wear out and about just because is considered taxable.
Okay. Well, ideally then, would it be a good idea or a bad idea for the extra two hundred and fifty dollars? Or is this something you think ideally that we should pay for on our own, I mean?
I I don't like guys having to pay for it on your own because, I mean, and I get with I R S has their rules, but but you're not gonna wear that to every day. I mean, nobody is, but in the eyes of the I R S.
First thing in the morning, does the truck come home or come here and then go home and it comes right off?
Comes off, but um.
It's a grocery store.
So I mean, if if you thinking that, I mean, if we can skirt it somehow by having it look more like, I don't I don't know
A uniform?
what the difference really is, but I would probably say leave it in there and and cause it is important, I mean, it it makes sense for you guys to have that.
Okay. Wouldn't.
Could you pay less, they're gonna pay less in taxes than if you bought it on your own, certainly, right? Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
So.
What if they were kept here and they just changed into them when they got to their office?
How inconvenient would that be?
Yeah, and then you just got a laundry.
No. Oh, we'll need to look at lockers now, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Why don't you just add to it, Brandon? That's amazing, use a laundry. I really don't know and I really don't care, to be honest. I'm just passing on this I R S ruling.
Okay.
Because I know DeKalb got audited and I don't wanna get audited.
But the pro and the problem is if if she get if she gets audited, they get fined if the I R S chose to do that.
The county gets fined, right?
The the county would get fined, so.
Because we're not following their guidelines.
Okay, well, let's follow their guidelines.
Yeah, like I said, it's less for you guys to pay a little bit of tax on it than to go out and buy your own shirts. I mean, you got seven hundred and fifty dollars for three guys. I mean, it's just like the pants though, they would be taxable too, that you go over to Rool King or Tractors, I can't remember where you got them, don't care.
Rool Rool King.
Right, but you can wear them pants anywhere.
True.
So they should be taxable.
Okay.
Okay?
Anything else for Glenn?
I have a question about his janitor's supplies, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
How come that went up so much, Glenn?
That went up pretty much to afford to maintain the courthouse. Um new expenses for the courthouse. Um that second story floor we discussed, gonna have to wax it and burnish it. Uh burnisher pads for a ten pack is sixty nine dollars and sixty cents. Wax is thirty dollars per gallon, wax applicator pads. Uh between all the toilets and urinals that are uh over there, they all take double A batteries. And there's a hundred and twenty six batteries that I will have to replace from time to time. Um for a hundred and twenty six, I believe it was a hundred and thirty uh pack that I found at uh set battery supplies. At Fort Wayne.
The batteries plus or whatever.
Seventy seven dollars ninety four cents, uh softener sold, ten bags a month. Average is about eight bags a month over there, but we do purchase ten at a time. Um annual cost of one thousand two hundred and forty eight dollars. Uh spending an average of a hundred and thirty eight dollars more monthly just on toilet paper. Uh.
I don't know why they can't bring their own from home.
Yeah.
Use their.
Uh that that is.
Yeah, use their uniforms.
That is an annual cost of one thousand six hundred and fifty six dollars just for toilet paper. Um drinking fountain filters, there are three fountains over there. A hundred and six dollars and sixty three cents uh per filter, that's three hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty four cents.
How many times a year do you change those?
Once. We also have two over here and I just found out yesterday that the south complex, um when they renovated uh the restrooms uh downstairs, they installed a new drinking fountain that does have a filter. And I'm gonna have to find out what kind of filter that is and the price.
I wanna say this about the filters, purchases like that um could be paid for out of Kium courthouse.
I I. Can we, can we?
Even these filters for the furnace, the filters you're putting in all these rooms, I think you could pay for that out of Kium courthouse versus this budget.
For changing the filters twice a year, just at the courthouse uh courthouse alone is gonna cost two thousand four hundred and twelve dollars.
Yeah, I think you move that, that's a bill you give me and we take out of that Kium fountain.
And we also do the same for here.
I understand.
South complex, because those get changed roughly once a month, that's the South complex.
This this building and that building for sure fall under the guidelines for Kium courthouse. The south complex, you know, it used to be if it was on the square, I don't know what the rule is for sure on that, but.
Okay.
I mean, I think those are bills that we pay for over time.
I.
So if we do that, uh Glenn.
Yes.
Shelley, I mean, how, I mean, what does that look like for requested budget item now? I mean, is that, how much would, can we take out of there approximately?
I mean, you could take a few thousand dollars off that if it came to, I guess.
If if that's the case, let me see, would would that also include the uh the refrigerator water filters? To my knowledge, this is a four year old building. I do not believe they have been changed from walls.
Right, that was it, that would include that also.
Okay.
I don't think we we should get into the habit of buying cleaning supplies, but I think you could get into the habit of buying needed replacement items.
Okay.
Like the filters and I mean, things like that. I don't know, how much is in Kium courthouse, are you looking?
Yeah.
Okay, you know what the balance is? In his line item, which is three something, I can't remember, it's a three hundred line item. It's a cheat sheet on my desk.
Oh, computer.
No.
How did the eleven thirty six rate?
Yeah, I think so.
There's building construction.
Yep, that's it right there.
Right now, there's thirteen thousand.
Yeah, so it started with um but see Jackie spends out of that too, that isn't just me.
Right.
So but I mean, I still think it's something that we should look at and remove some of those items.
What's the balance? Do we have a balance?
Um well, it's got a large balance, cause it gets a tax rate, okay?
Okay.
Okay, fine, so Glenn, what do you think we could reduce your requested increase by?
If we take out the asking Christ or
About five hundred thousand, that could.
If we're going to go with just filters.
Twenty seven, five hundred thousand.
Can you get back with us on that?
Yeah.
So he's not in the spot, yeah.
So we can, yeah, so we can.
Yeah, we just need to know by Thursday, so we can.
Just. Yeah, just use the email.
Yeah.
Okay.
Requested to Shelley.
Or Shelley.
I can I can have that done by today.
That's fine.
Yeah, send it to Shelley.
I'll see.
I will.
Think you're putting it in the spot.
And and yeah, also, um I was gonna say, I'll get with you, Shelley, and we'll kinda come up with uh.
A plan.
Yes.
Okay, are you got any other questions for Glenn?
Pest pest control, I am asking for a little bit more and it's just to cover the cost for the square footage of the courthouse in comparison to uh we was treating probation, which was down here at Hazel Street. This courthouse is definitely larger than that building and that's where that additional cost comes from.
And the window cleaning, that's, is that outsourced?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's almost, yeah.
As far as ground improvement, what what's gonna be improved? I mean, since I already been pretty well done. Um.
Yeah.
Ground improvement, we have Harlow's that comes in twice a year. That is for here at the annex building, and I'm glad that you did bring that up. Um they come in for a spring clean, which they'll scoop out two inches of mulch. They'll replace that mulch. Um they also trim a couple of the bushes and the hedges, but I'd say majority of their work is within the mulch. Then in the fall time, they'll come back in and they'll clean everything up, pretty much cut everything down. Um and start again in the spring. I got ahold of Harlow's and asked them what it would cost to pretty much come in, go ahead and scoop out all the mulch, put down a new weed barrier, put in a edge guard and replace the mulch with river rock, which would match what is across the street. It would be less maintenance, I believe it would save us sixteen thousand dollars a year because we would no longer need them to come in and Craig and I could take over pruning, cleanup, leave room. I mean, we're already doing this stuff, so to me, it makes no sense. That would save us roughly sixteen thousand dollars a year. Um I was, when I did get this quote, which was in December of twenty four, the bid price was twenty seven thousand dollars. I asked them on June fourth uh if if that is still a good quote. And Corey Teague said the budget for thirty thousand dollars just to be on the safe side and that's because material costs and disposal fees have increased slightly since last season.
That's something to make the make for the Kium.
Now, that does not mean that we necessarily have to go with Harlow's because they do have a contract. At the end of their contract, maybe we could find someone else to come in and perform that job to bring that stuff in. We don't have the equipment to necessarily do that. They bring in a twelve man crew, they've got dump bed trucks in here, they've got like a small mini loader that they're hauling everything around.
So that contract is just a yearly contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're under contract right now through twenty five?
Yes.
Okay.
Where's Harlow's? Fort Wayne, to my knowledge. Um.
Yes, Fort Wayne.
Did you go with them just because they're a large group or do you know?
But you just say Kium courthouse. Could pay for that if you wanted to make that change.
So do we have a contract with them just because they're a larger crew or I mean, cause there's tons of landscaping.
I hate mulch.
I I I I honestly don't know, that was before my time. Okay. And but I do know that it was Harlow's that done all the landscaping next door before they handed it over.
But we have a landscaping business in Leganere, we have a couple in Kinder, I mean.
Hundreds of.
And if anyone has any idea on.
Yeah.
It didn't change at all. Countries too, countryscapes.
Yeah, countryscapes.
Yeah.
How is uh reef look or roof?
Roof leaf?
Yeah.
Very good.
Very good. Are they good?
Nice to work for them.
Okay.
Well, that's a downer right there.
They're good.
Yeah, we've got some good ones.
Yeah, we got.
Take it into consideration.
We got a lot of them.
There's like one right down the road too, kinda looks on. But is is that something that you think would be beneficial? Because with that thirty thousand dollars, we're spending sixteen a year right now.
I agree.
I think so.
We'd we'd have our money back in two years.
Have you talked to the commissioners about change, changing that?
No, I haven't. Uh, yeah, I talked to Gary about that, he said to get a quote, I saw the quote and said, ooh, I don't know.
Okay. It's ultimately, you know, that's my house.
I changed my house too.
It's in your house.
So you.
I think it's a little idea though.
Yeah.
Sure.
Even, I don't know about rubber mulch.
Makes sense.
I love rubber mulch. Expensive, exactly, very expensive.
That's what I use.
I, my my idea was trying to match what we had across the street, um.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
I love rubber rock.
Try and get it to look semi silver.
You get a little.
You know, there's actual glue that you put on that river rock and that's like your blower.
A little mold on that river rock.
Right, right. Yes.
There's a glue that you put on that river rock that keeps it in place, people use a blower, it doesn't blow all over, I just found that.
The leaf blower. Does it also similar to any seal?
It it seals it. Just talking about those throwables. No, no, it's a glue that actually keeps your river rock in place when you come through with your blower.
Yeah, we have the same thing with the rubber mulch.
It doesn't work on mulch, because I just bolt some. I would not, I'd stay away from black.
I hate to say this, but Doug Hart just can't take care of this.
I know, I know. Well, this is, these are good questions, so.
Okay, so.
Jackie just brought that up.
I think it was last week she said something about that.
I bet.
Okay.
Okay, but then potentially.
Uh, and any other questions?
Well, good job.
No, that's her idea.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, very well thought out.
Okay. Yep.
We understand that there's more needs over there and, or it is.
Okay, thank you. And Shelley, I will contact you later.
But then potentially, twenty six, um, the sixteen thousand could either be cut or reduced, it's gonna.
Page twenty seven.
No, twenty seven probably.
Twenty.
Okay.
Because you'd have to, I don't think it should come out of this budget.
Well, yeah, you should write them.
Twenty six. I think you should take the sixteen, yeah, because if we pay for it out of unappropriated, we have to appropriate it in Cume, but still.
She, you're right.
Yeah, we're already circling up.
Sixteen circle.
It would move money to take care of what you're doing here.
Yeah.
And you could reduce what he wants to spend this on probably.
Okay.
Steve. How you doing?
Okay.
Good.
So what, I'm sorry, uh, what options, I guess, do we have to take things out of it for us?
Well, I'll tell you as you go, but Cume Courthouse is a restricted fund to be spent right here. And and groundskeeping, maintaining the buildings, like the filters, things like that would all fall under that.
And what, what, how does money get into that account?
It has a point zero one or two cent rate, it's a tax rate.
So it's just a tax rate?
It's inside our levy, but it's a tax rate, right, that's where that money comes from.
Yeah. And some of the, I think you weren't here yet, Trey, but some of the problem is those bills, they just get paid through the budget. And then by the time they get it, I mean, there's other areas they could have spent it rather than out of general. So we're trying to change that a little bit if we can.
Yeah.
You don't wanna, like, when I was the auditor the first time, Cume Courthouse had ten cents on it and the jail had ten cents, they were gonna build the jail. Well, those are all been reduced, some went to the health department, some came into county general, because it is inside our levy, so.
And and that goes to show, show you, when, let's say Glenn put an email commissioner, shows you know about it, because she knew where the funding went. That's my prime example right there.
Yeah.
When you do a project involving money.
Right.
Cause that, that's been paid out, could have been paid out different fund and help us reduce a different budget, the, the general.
Yeah. Exactly. Yeah. The way I'm getting money for you Steve, so we're out.
Okay, um. Good morning. Good morning. This uh starting with salaries, um, we have three people now. So, uh, the first one, which would be for me, um, I think probably saw that. Going from sixty six one one six up to eighty three five, um. So that ends per contract that I signed with the contractors, uh, the commissioners for four years. If there's any questions about that.
I think we were, you know, privy to that kind of timing, so.
The second one, uh, for Kelly, of course she is the unique one here, um, because we are pulling uh some, the majority of it from the general fund. But then there's also uh nine thousand nine hundred dollars that's pulling from the um assessor's transfer, what's a transfer fee, Shelley, is that right?
Yeah.
So her salary would be, um.
Nine nine hundred of hers is coming from that.
Right, so it's fifty one thousand six hundred and seventy five is what, uh, what I'm asking for her.
Actually, that's my tr- our transfer, I mean, that's the ten dollars to be taken for transfer, doesn't have anything to do with the assessor.
Oh, I said assessor didn't, I'm sorry, I'm, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So what should that number be?
Well, that that is correct, the way it show, uh, it's shown there, forty one thousand seven hundred and seventy five.
Oh, okay.
Right, and then ninety one hundred of it, you add to, that makes our actual salary, it comes from the transfer fee fund, which is page twenty two.
Why is it fifteen thousand on the proposed request budget?
Well, because fifteen thousand dollars is Bria Irwin in my office.
I'm sorry. Okay, I I see.
Okay, there's a few people that get paid money there.
And then we have the third deputy, which will be, um, Jordan Gibbs, who'd be.
What is the reasoning for that?
Because that money's restricted and it just sits there, it keeps growing and it takes a little bit of heartache off the general fund.
Okay.
And it is restricted, so we can't just say, hey, I'm gonna pay you out of there. Bria in my office is a transfer person, um, Kelly in his office is a drawler to do the transfers, so they fit in that category.
So, yeah, the third deputy would be, um, Jordan Gibbs, uh, she'll be starting the twenty fifth of August, so next Monday she'll be starting. So wait, I, I'm asking for fifty six six fifty, which would be a three percent increase from her starting salary at fifty five thousand. But obviously, she'll be starting, you know, new, so probably I can go at least maybe six months before I would bump her up to what that salary would be, so.
So she starts at fifty five thousand?
Um, that that's starting, but then there's that magnitude period where I'm paying the ten percent off for like.
Yeah.
For the multi-period, if you want to say.
So would Dave be entitled to the pay raise? Starting one month or a few months before the end of the year.
That is your judge's decision ultimately when you're, through your budgets.
I mean, that, from my understanding, right, it's starting at fifty five and just giving him the the ability to bump it to fifty six six fifty. When he feels that she's where she needs to be.
We have a couple departments.
Sounds like it's case by case then.
Yes, I believe that's what, I believe Teresa did that last year too, which I like that approach, just because.
Yeah, Teresa did that, I think Dave's done that before.
Yeah. Yes, they did too.
Um. Yeah. We keep, not all departments do it, but the, when we instituted the, uh, uh, helping out for John Fattig and all that stuff. That was kind of the model that they wanted to use, was that you would get a pay range and an apartment head would opt to to bump it up accordingly. But actually, we may have a couple of them that do it, so.
Same way.
Thank you. Porge again.
Um, so then we go to education training, I did bump that up a little bit since we have a third person in the department to to pay for. So going to our G I S annual conference, other education that they need throughout the year. Part time overtime, that is gonna be the same, four hundred dollars. That's pretty much it for that first group in there. They have the equipment repairs and supplies, that's Ben Zero. And then equipment and supplies, that is, I bumped that down to two hundred dollars. Main reason is because we have a platter, uh, currently, eight percent of the supplies for that. But then, uh, working with Dave, he's gonna be able to to take that over, include that with other printers, uh, at the end of our lease in July of next year. Figured, you know, we might as well bump that down some bit. And I already should bump that down to just a hundred fifty, I do try to take the county vehicle if I can, uh, just in case I can't, I have somebody accountable there. Use some subscriptions, I I kept that at six hundred dollars. I know this promotion of county, what is that? I kept that as three hundred, but it's funds, you know, if we want to do like a house with G I S or something like that, we have a little bit of money for any amount of that. Uh, we haven't been using that amount. And I thought it was fine, but it's been updated, so.
Mm-hmm.
For this. So then you've got computer hardware, software, uh, that was included, I believe in the letters that I sent you. Normally I would carry that in my budget and then if you hold it in I T, so now it's gonna show up in the I T budget. Sort of the, make note of that. If there were any questions about that.
Pretty cut your eye. Part.
Pretty cut your eye.
Any questions, the second page is just the transfer, they're just.
The uh. The eighty three five deputy salary.
Where you at?
Trey did it.
One one oh three.
No, Trey did it on his own.
Top one.
That's Steve's, that's the contract.
Okay.
I know, it's hard to imagine that Trey knew how to do that on his own, but he did.
Can you do not copy to me, please?
Yeah. It's gonna have someone else to delete the comments about you, but.
Hey, you don't have to. But that's if you're right on it.
Any other questions for Steve? Questions for us, Steve?
It will attach.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do I need a break, or we good to go?
You know, once I get started, it's not how I'm having.
I know.
Shelley, I have a question for you on page twenty two, okay?
Yep.
It says deputy one 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 two, I don't find that.
It says fifteen thousand.
Mm-hmm.
That's my deputy, you won't see that, it's my budget.
Oh, that's my day, okay.
Okay? We just have two people that can be paid out of there, so that's what we've done.
I don't know, just like, it's a little more detailed, but. Then what can, you can, depending on, for this, a little more detail once you get in your normal budget sheet. Helps me explain some stuff here.
Dave. I'm gonna have.
I can hold it.
I want a man might buy you.
She told me, I would put it on site.
No, that's fine.
Okay, one more one two.
Yeah, you can, you want holes in yours too?
Well, who's doing the work punching?
Brandon.
Ah, geez, this area.
I don't know if that works.
Close one. I don't do this on one of my files.
Does that work?
He's just working. Well, I'll open it here, yeah.
I hope I got two, do you have another?
Why is it not there? Yeah, I want maybe more than enough, I think, because everybody can have one.
Okay. Yeah.
I don't, that's, I have one for Max too, I punched the wrong side of the file.
I think it's in the.
There's more than enough.
Okay.
I tried not to print too much, but there's now that paper's a little better than electronics, because you can write on it. Unless you're good, not much of you're good at that. So you guys decide to take a break?
No, we didn't.
Okay. All right, well, good morning again.
Morning.
Morning.
Um. Paper I just handed out to you has, um, the same budget information, the same data that you have on your sheets. But there's more data added in there, so that I can go through and point out some things. The columns on the right, they have a box around them, those are outside of budget numbers, those are actually expenses or the actual, what was spent in twenty twenty four. And then what's projected to be spent in twenty twenty five. So it goes beyond budget, because I always like to talk about what we actually did versus what we said we were gonna do. Okay, do you want me to go over general things first, or do you want to go through the numbers first and then you can kick me out when I talk to you? Which do you prefer? Uh, just go through now, so. Okay, um, so this year, twenty twenty five, what have we been up to? Uh, well, we finished courthouse renovation support, so it's gonna bring a new network in there, brand new security, brand new courtroom tech. Um, and all the relocation of all the offices was done, we got that finished here in the first quarter, beginning of the first quarter of this year. And uh, so all that capital now has been spent and put in place. Um, and as of now, pretty much everything is stable, we've had to make a few tweaks with a couple things between security and courtroom tech, but it's nothing, nothing major. In terms of general operations, I T related, other than the standard computer replacement, software support, help desk and all that. Uh, we've been doing multi-factor authentication, uh, and getting that rolled out everywhere. So that pretty much if you log into our systems, and it, not everybody's using the app, almost everybody's using it. If you need to log into our systems to access anything that's our data, you have to use multi-factor. So you have to either have token or have the app on your phone. We've not forced it into email yet, uh, but we really need to get to the point where we're doing it for email as well. But for anybody using computers in our facilities that are connected to our data, um, they have to do multi-factor. The sheriff's department's the last step, we'll get to that in a minute. We've been changing some of our tool sets to do a better job, so that we don't have to have more people to do things. We now can remotely deploy almost every piece of software, so rather than having to go up to a computer, we can literally sit there and push it out to a computer, update it and all that stuff. Without ever having to go to the user or even involve the user in any cases. Um, same thing with the remote support tool, we were using some old tools for a long time to be able to do remote support. We are now using an integrated tool set, um, which will allow us then to do a lot more things than we did securely, because it does use multi-factor. And that same tool set is what we're going to use, have vendors use to be able to get to help users here. So if a vendor has a software package for say the auditor, they'll use that tool to get to the auditor's computers, so that they can go in there and do things. What the nice thing about this tool is, is first off, it has auditing capabilities, so we can keep track of who's been into what computer when. And it also then gives the users control over letting someone into the computer or not. So they can say, I'm working on, you can't get in, or they know that somebody's trying to get in to do work on it. And that goes for us trying to work with them too, so a lot of this gets into the cybersecurity aspects of things. So those are sort of the, uh, other than the normal things that we we normally do, um, and the, since pretty much the building and everything is done. There's a little bit of work at south complex doing that right now. We're pretty much just kind of going back to a sort of an operational mode versus, uh, having to deal with building. For the rest of twenty twenty five, we gotta finish up, uh, helping south complex with the renovation, we're doing the termination connections and stuff down there, we gotta put in some water, let's give it a chance. We're gonna try to finish up the multi-factor deployment at the sheriff's department. The hardest thing there is the mobile devices and cars. And anybody who deals with that knows there's an issue between, how much do you make somebody do when they really need to get on a computer? And how long do you leave that thing unlocked before you make them lock it? There's, we'll work through it, it's been figured out in other places, but I'll stop. I thought I'd take it off. Uh, and then the other thing we're doing, and and Steve had only mentioned it with G I S, is Steve has a major upgrade needs to be done with G I S. Uh, and it's been needed and done for about a year and a half. Part of the reason we didn't get to the point where we were going to do it is because there's interconnect between his G I S system and Spillman. And they have to work together because dispatch relies on the mapping of the G I S for Spillman. And Spillman's been dragging their feet. Well, the problem is Spillman's dragging their feet beyond the end date of Steve's current software that he's got. So we had, we'd already changed over his licensing a year and a half ago, to be able to do these updates to get to the most current thing. Um, but actually getting it done, we're kind of waiting to see when Spillman's gonna be ready to be able to let us make this change. It turns out Spillman's not gonna do it until prior twenty twenty seven, but his software becomes end of life at March, Steve's does. That's the problem, right? So what we did is we worked out essentially a plan, he's got, um, a consultant's gonna help do the upgrade. But what we're gonna do is keep two systems running in parallel. One common set of data, so we don't have to worry about the problem of do we have two sets of data and is it current? But there's gonna be two different G I S systems, two different versions of the system accessing it. So the older system that's currently running, Spillman will still get the data through that interface. And the new system then, we're gonna be migrating everything else over to that first. And the interface is different for the users, it does change the software licensing for the tool set. It gives people outside of Steve's three person department, like the assessor, um, and anybody else surveyor, whoever else might need to get in there. It will give them the ability to do editing without increasing our licensing cost, because that's where they always hit you with the licensing. It's not on accessing the data, it's always on licensing, of editing it and manipulating it. Um, so the new licensing model lets us do that already. Um, so what'll happen is, once that new system is up and running, we'll be migrating things from one to the other. So certain things that, you know, uh, Jason Peppinger uses it for septic, for instance. His applications will migrate to the new system, he'll be accessing it that way. And eventually Spillman will probably be the last thing to go. Once that is all moved over, then we just decommission the old server. And the new server will be the old system we use. So that's thirty thousand dollars worth of work that'll be done in the next few months, it goes back to the commissioners. Um, you can see their funds for that, go back to the commissioners for the next meeting to approve that. And there's some other longer-term things with the GIS we're trying to do. I'll get to that in a minute. Basically, what's the difference in my budget numbers before I actually go through the numbers themselves? In general, some of our vendors have increased their software way more than three percent. And those are captive vendors and I can't do anything about it unless we say we're gonna try and look at it for a different vendor. So, and Shelley will love that because Lyle's one of the biggest ones that hit us this year. Not only with the increased cost, but we've also, we're also buying more software. That's something people don't always think about is, um, you know, it's like you guys will approve the purchase of a software because somebody says we need it in given year. What happens is in recurring years, it's still in the budget every year. It doesn't just come up once, it comes up over and over. And usually it ends up rolling into IT unless it's being paid for like out of a perpetuation fund or something. So my budget's gonna go up and I can't control that cost. Okay, so if, I'll show you the numbers here when that shows up. Again, I, there's other costs we'll try to do to offset it and some other ways of trying to handle it, but those were some of our biggest cost increases coming from. We still got cybersecurity threats coming out every day. Nate's on vacation and thank goodness, or you'd be listening to a cybersecurity talk for another hour. I mean, it's his responsibility right now to make sure we're possibly properly doing the right things. But it's not a little way, it's gonna get worse. Uh, then we just have to do some things. And some of the programs we have in place like CrowdStrike, which we got for free, in the next eighteen months, that cost is gonna revert to us because what the federal government is doing, pulling back in terms of some of the programs that they were funding as well. So we, we are looking at, do we keep CrowdStrike, do we do something else? We can't not do anything, but we're trying to be intelligent about only adopting the technology that makes sense for us versus whatever, you know, the fear mongers out there, they're laying their hands, we'll tell you, you have to have. But we know we have to have certain things. One of the good things that's happening out of some of the changes is that the state has the proposal, and we'll see if it actually gets done through, where our cyber insurance would be done through the state rather than through private insurers. Now, we would have.
Nobody cut that, yes.
What's that?
Nobody cut it.
We even totally cut that out?
Yeah.
Well, the, the thing is, they know that the burden on us, see, I don't even know what we pay for cyber insurance. I, a couple of years ago, I actually got a copy of, of the agreement. I have no idea whether it's even worth it. Because usually the first thing that happens when you have a cyber attack is, they lock you down and will let you do anything because they want it to be doing all the forensics and figuring out what happened and all that, you know? And that's great, if you go, if your car, okay, tell my car, give me a rental car, but we don't have a rental IT system here with all of our data that we can go borrow while our system is being locked down. And it was a year and a half ago, Clay County got whacked and they were offline for weeks because the, the cyber insurance people said, if you touch it, we won't pay. And I don't even know what our policy says, I don't know what we're paying, I don't know what it covers. And I honestly think we should go back and take a look at it, because we may be buying insurance that isn't gonna do anything for us anyway. But either here nor there, it's just a point I wanna make it. We're always looking at where the cost is coming from and what we need to do. That's something that I think we need to address, because we are gonna have more pressures about where, who's gonna fund what, at what level, and how much help we're gonna get from the state.
Date, have you brought that up to the commissioners?
I brought it up in the past, I, I, every year I'm gonna ask the question, but it's like, it's buried in some insurance policy and the insurance agents go, oh, there's cyber insurance in there, but you know, it, you always wanna know what it actually covers, you know, how do they, how do they get any out of pay? And where they cover. Most every other county I know is happy the state wants to take the silver because it, I think it's gonna be a cost reduction for everybody. Even if the state's paying for it, it's gonna be cheaper than us having to pay for it individually. And I think the insurance companies really don't wanna offer it either, because they don't have a quantifier for the damages and things, and they don't really keep cyber experts on staff. Right now, if we had a cyber attack, the first thing we recall is the Indiana National Guard, because they actually have a cyber team. We get, well, at the state, you know, but then they have a cyber team that can actually come in and help do things. And I guess somebody, I've heard Dabbage County recently had an attack, they were in there for twenty-four hours, had them, so when they could fix, start fixing things. So that's a lot faster than weeks. Anyway, cyber is always going to be an issue and there's always gonna be costs associated with it. Staffing, okay, first off, I wanna actually thank you last year for correcting the imbalances we were trying to deal with in terms of being able to hire, make it as possible to be able to, to keep kind of everybody here happy, you know, as best we can and, and to get somebody on staff. So Kyle Mayborder was hired about three months ago, yes, he's, he's not blood related to Shelley, so we can be happy about that. Just teasing Shelley, you know, he loves it there.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, come on. Uh, anyway, uh, so we've kind of restructured and, and the people who were on the classification, top classification committee saw that job get structured a certain way. And so my, uh, my sal, my sheet that I gave, it actually titles the positions of what those positions are versus what the accounting system calls them. And so we've got a permanent hire, so now permanent staff for. There, I'll just quiet it. So he, uh, Kyle's on board, so now we're back to what I consider full capacity and we continue to use interns. So interns, this year we had two this summer. We might have used three if we hadn't already moved everything over to the courthouse, we probably could have used the third one. But because we'd already done that and we had already, basically that was a lot of computer deployment, we had to make a bunch of new computers set up over there, and that was taken care of before the interns got here. Okay, so strategic objectives, we're doing one, two to five years out. Cybersecurity, number one. Number two, and I mentioned this last year, we gotta work on our continuity of operations planning across the enterprise. The, the truth is this, and this is no knock, because this is true everywhere, whether it's government, whether it's private sector, whatever else. I would dare say that no department head knows what their information is worth. They don't know. And they go, well, you know, it's an IT problem, right? No, it's not. Because the data that is in the department, we didn't collect it, we have no idea what it necessarily means. We don't know how long it's good for, we don't know how to tell when it's bad, all that stuff. That's really somebody else's responsibility, and if you don't have access to the data, how do you continue to operate it till you do? I can't do that for every department, that's gotta be their job, and so many of them, I'm afraid, don't even think about it. And so one of the things we have to do is keep trying to raise the awareness. We have a, um, an incident response plan, formal, which Kyle actually helped us last December finish out when he was an intern. And it tells us, if, when something happens, here is exactly what we do. And it's, the shortened version is about ten pages, the longer version is about thirty pages for an incident. I dare say that most departments here, you told them that they just have a cyber attack and their computers aren't working, they wouldn't go, wouldn't have anywhere to go, they'd all be looking at their boss in what we do now.
You'd ask Gary, not, because you knew the bosses in the audit office.
And then, and then they come and ask us what we do.
You bet.
And I'm going like, no way. I mean, and I got twenty-some departments here that are all gonna be demanding that everything get back online. I'm going, you guys aren't, I'm gonna get the same priority at the same time.
But my office does pay people.
Everybody's got an argument like that. What's interesting though is, you know, when we went through our cyber event, I'll call cyber event, I hate to call it tax, but. In, in twenty nineteen, I mean, we kind of jumped in and just started turning the gears and we got through it. But I'm afraid that that's not the way that it would happen the next time, it just wouldn't for a lot of reasons. I mean, we have our plans to do what we need to do, but everybody needs to be looking in the same direction. It's kind of like you can have all the plans in the world for what to do if there's a fire, but if nobody knows where the fire escapes are, and nobody's ever been told how to get there, or where their fire extinguishers are, when the fire hits, somebody's gonna get burned. So that's something that's kind of sitting on me more than the cyber side of what we're doing, is to raise that, uh, awareness of everybody.
Can I stop you right there?
Sure.
With plans? What's a plan for backup for you?
For me?
Yeah.
Nate. You mean for me personally?
Yeah.
Yeah, Nate, Nate's my de, my chief deputy. And we have, we have a lot of overlap for that.
Okay.
Now, I mean, officially, if and when I retire, I will retire, or I'll die first. You know, the succession plan belongs to the commissioners officially. So there's no, no discussion of exactly how that would work, but I would say that odds are ninety-nine percent that Nate would move up and we'd hire somebody to backfill.
Okay, thank you.
But anyway, so that's where that is, and, and we, we overlap a lot. Sometimes people get confused who to talk to, whether it's talk to me and Nate, and it's like, it's fine. We sort of know where our lines are, but we also have a lot of overlap, just so that we can be, you know, he's not here this week, something happens and he's dealing with, I have to deal with it. So that, so continuity of operations across the enterprise, and here's the big one, and I'll talk about it at the end, if you talk about my numbers with what time we've got, as what interest level is. Those two funny letters you hear all the time in the media, AI. You right now probably going, I don't know what AI is good for, I hear about it, and it's like, is it, you know, Skynet from, from Terminator or what, what's going on there? And I'm gonna tell you right now, I'll show you later, you're actually using it all the time, you don't even know it. The problem is, is that we need to get a hold of how we're using it and make sure we're using it properly, or it will be a bigger problem than cybersecurity. It would be a lot, much larger problem with cybersecurity in a lot of different aspects, especially fiscal ones. So I'll talk to that again, but I just want you to understand that we have to start looking at that. The state's already working on a cyber plan, they've already got some things at the state level. State government already has to have, if you use AI officially in your organization, you have to have a cyber plan that has to be approved by the state, if you're state agents. And of course, the local government will, first of all, the state, they're so hard on us. Well, they're not telling us to do anything, and so you can get that, most people aren't doing anything. But it could be a problem, so anyway. So know that that's there. So in the short term, twenty twenty-six, well, I got two objectives on top of the basic things. Number one is, we gotta integrate IT GIS better. There's just far too many things that people rely on that data for, um, that we need to be able to do a better job of supporting. And I've been working with Steve closely, we've been trying to figure out, okay, how do we set our roadmaps up to be aligned? How do we look at our long-term expenses of things? How can we best support the GIS part of information that, that is being used here? And we'll just keep working on that, because I honestly think that, that's a critical thing. I mean, the public sees more of our GIS data than they see of almost any other, the rest of our data, except for their tax bills, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's about all they see, and, and that information, not only is it valuable, but there is a ton of things we can be doing with it, if we can just get above critical mass. So that's something I'll be working with that one. And then, um, looking at the AI stuff, um, application evaluation of policy planning. So by next year, probably talking AI for real, but in the meantime, there'll be bits and pieces of it kind of drifting out. Okay, numbers, what's on my page? Okay, well, I wanna just, you, you see the numbers, I'll go through the twenty twenty-six request and see if that all makes sense to you. The salaries, we basically took the twenty twenty-five approved, top end of the range for, and two, well, one, two, two of those, because Nate and I don't really have range at this point. But the other two, we took the top end of the range and moved it up three percent, and then moved ours up three percent, that's what we requested. I rounded, Shelley asked me why my numbers didn't match, because I rounded, because I like see a couple of zeros at the end instead of seventeen or twenty-three or whatever. But it basically is three percent. And that's the range is currently, um, neither of the specialists are being paid at the top end of the range.
So just for clarification.
So this is my error, okay? I hate saying that out loud. But I highlighted these because I always look at what they're being paid right now.
Yep.
And then I take it, so Dave is right, he was budgeted for this much, he's only paying him this much, and that's where I figured the three percent. So he is, he is within the three percent. It's just that he took the top end and, and the three percent.
I took the top end of everything and multiply by one point of.
Right.
So are your people at the top end or your?
No.
Two of them aren't.
Nate and I are.
Okay.
The two of them are not.
So yours, okay.
So he's within the three percent, that's my error, right?
We don't really have, we don't. We have a rage on us, I can, but they, but they do. And we're all.
So you've got that basically in there, because potentially by the end of, or middle of twenty-six or.
At some point in time, I wanna be able to reward people for their additional skills, because we hired somebody, if we had had to hire, like, we hired Kyle, if, he's right out of school, but he worked with us for a couple of terms as an intern. If we'd had to hire somebody with higher level skills, a couple of years of skills, we would have paid a lot more for him. And so I'd rather be able to reward them to keep them here, because that's the goal, is to keep our staff stable at a certain size, rather than have to be replacing and reeducating and recruiting and all those costs that we don't have to incur. And we were very picky, I mean, yeah, I know he's a Mayborder, but we were very picky about who we wanted to have in here. We were very clear about what our expectations were. This isn't the private sector, and we're not gonna pay private sector wages, and you're not gonna have a career path here that says you climb twelve steps of a ladder, it doesn't exist in our department.
I like to hear that upfront right there.
Because then, people are well-adjusted to what the expectation should be. And I say, here's what the benefits are doing this job, if you wanna do it because of this and this list. You got it. I will do my best to make sure you get that. On the other hand, if you're looking for these other things, this is probably not a good fit.
I pay Kyle extra every week, we keep candy for him in my office and he.
I thought Nate was the one I was trying to get at.
He's a lot of that candy.
Nate does too.
Oh, he does, he does too.
It's always him. So, but anyway, so, so, so salaries are basically three percent of the upper end of the range. And again, you'll see, if you look at the actual projected ver, and numbers on the right, you'll see where those actuals worked out this year, that both those, the second, the third and fourth positions, the projected surpluses are because, well, first off, we hired Kyle's position in the middle of the year, and second, because neither of them are making upper end of the range. Okay, so that's it, that. Education and training, three thousand dollars again, and that we use it. Nate is currently president of Genus Indiana, which is our organization at the state level, okay? And, um, he does a great job, because he doesn't take a lot of time to do, and yet he leverages a lot of things that the organization's doing really well. But I am trying to get my people to be able to go to the meetings once in a while to get some additional networking time with other people in other counties, to find out what they're doing and how they're approaching problems, and help them see how we do it. So we're doing, we're gonna keep doing that. Hard time overtime is my interns, and I'll show you, if you look on the right, we looked at those real numbers here at the end, you'll see that's actually a very cost-effective thing for us to do. If you want me to stop, just interrupt me, or I'll keep rolling.
Well, I got a question on a computer maintenance fees, are you gonna?
I'll get down to that, yeah, I'll get down to that.
The part-time, that's mainly the summer.
Part-time, part-time, we don't pay any overtime, because we're all, we're all exempt.
Right.
And thank you, I mean, thanks for both council and commissioners for letting us do that. We all win with that one, okay? Everybody wins with that one. So, uh, that's how we avoid the whole downtime problem. The gas oil lube is basically a maintenance on the vehicle, county vehicle, we have the gasoline and the maintenance on it. So that really, that, we, we've used it a little bit more, we used to just drive it, well, we've written that three thousand dollars and went down to one thousand, or up to about fifteen hundred, that's why I wanted you to see that year-to-year on my sheet. Okay, listen, I'm looking at. Okay, now the big numbers, the bigger numbers anyway, other than salaries, which is, I've got it figured already. Software license fees, um, we had three hundred eleven in twenty twenty-four approved, we were down to two fifty-nine last year, we're back up to two ninety this year. Why? Well, part of it is the vendor increases. Another one is, we missed a, an expense last year for almost ten thousand dollars in our budget, um, that didn't get budgeted. It was budgeted previous year, somehow when we do my, if you guys have ever seen my massive spreadsheet that has everything for every department in it, somehow one of the numbers didn't get to that yet, right? Uh, we still took care of it, because I have a surplus, I could pull that off. But I need to make sure that it gets accounted for. So those, that's where those increases are coming from. Um, and we're still trying to hold the line on not going to Microsoft three sixty-five if we can, because when that happens, you're probably looking at another thirty to forty thousand dollars a year.
Would you go to the crowd strike, what you're saying sixteen months, just a, top of your mind?
That, we're good through, we're good through one more year, so I'm not making a request yet, but the crowd strike will probably hit us. Again, I don't know, because we're not sure which parts of the package we would keep and which ones we might replace, but I'm gonna say we're probably looking at thirty to forty thousand dollars for that right here. When you divide that by all of our users per month, it's not very much money, but when you see it in a big number at the end of the budget, it is a big number. So, I, again, our goal right now, over the next year and a half, is to figure out what's the most cost-effective way to keep our cybersecurity posture up and try to not ingest more cost than we need to.
So as far as the computer maintenance fees and the ma, or the maintenance?
You got about the hardware maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that includes any kind of parts that we buy, so maybe needs a new monitor, so maybe a second monitor needs a mouse, needs keyboards. Uh, that includes all of the supplies we do for all the desktop printing, we don't have a separate line item. It's basically any miscellany stuff, cables.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, a, a different, something different.
Okay.
But, um, why couldn't, if you're servicing, you know, the ability to help the general fund out, why couldn't some of this come out a different fund also? Shelley?
Well, it, some of this used to maybe not do this.
Well, let, let me, let me point out, there's another category down there, forty, the forty-four thousand category, new hardware and software. In the private sector, it used to talk about capital versus operational expenses, right? And those have been capital expenses. The forty-four thousands are brand-new computers, brand-new software packages, I mean, more than a twenty dollars worth of software. Brand-new printers, brand-new anything that, that has a, a lifespan of more than, you know. Brand-new printers, brand-new anything that has a lifespan of more than, you know, six months to a year. So those all come out of forty-four thousand, whereas the thirty-one seven oh five is really just miscellaneous parts made, because it's usually purchases less than a hundred or two hundred dollars at a time, whereas the new hardware and software is usually under orders of hundreds to thousands of dollars a month.
And you, you know why I'm asking, Shelley?
I don't know that we have another place to take this from it, right? I mean, I can look into that a little bit, I thought we used to pay for some of it from something else, but I don't wanna say that, because I'm not sure.
Well, I know we buy, like, the recorder, their computers come out of their perpetuation fund, so we offset that there.
But when you talk like, like, let's just use the auditor's office as an example, I don't have any other fund. I don't, what most people call slush fund, which they aren't, but that's what they call them, I don't have anything like that. But our computer maintenance or software, our software is probably the most expensive software days supporting, but it is also the tax system, it is payroll system, it is the financial system, I mean, it is the drainage system now.
So he pays for it on his budget?
Yeah, because the software, I actually have a long time to go.
That's where, that's where I'm going with that, is.
Historically, historically, the departments might have their own, and then over the years, it's all.
Came today, and he maintains and helps.
IT, which don't make sense, right?
Which, at least that we get to see what the growth rates are, we can ask questions and, you know.
Well, I think that's, um, to help the general, is maybe even the commissioner's bucket, some of them line items, if there's a spot.
But there isn't a spot for some of them, okay? Because some of the extra funds, like the Cube Courthouse, where we're talking about this ground stuff, those are restricted funds. They don't let you just say, hey, I wanna pay that out of there.
Well, this could be a good example of some.
I, I would. It could be, but this doesn't have a light, I don't know, okay?
No, that's not.
I would have to check on that to make sure, I don't wanna stand here and say, hey, yeah, we can, because.
But there are two other funds besides the perpetuation fund for the recorders, that stuff does get purchased out of. Sheriff's Department pays for things out of low it, okay? Not everything, but there are technology things that they pay for out of low it. And, I have to still pause the other one, where is it? It's in the back. Seated, Steve pays some significant expenses for G I S, which are technology expenses out of seated. So rather than try to steal his money, I just figured it's like, okay, let the commissioners pay the G I S portion of this technology stuff out of seated, and we'll put this over here. Again, I don't, to me, it doesn't matter where you pay it, right? I just wanna make sure we get, we can do it.
So question on the maintenance fees, the computer maintenance fees, though, that's pretty much a hard number, isn't it, Dave?
The, which one?
Which, three one seven.
Three one seven, yeah, three one seven's or, three one seven oh oh is pretty much fixed.
That's a hard number that, there's no room there to do anything if you wanted to.
Yeah, that's pretty fixed. That, right. That includes licensing for our network, firewalls and everything else, yep.
Okay.
Again, we're trying to go back and reevaluate, I know we're not changing a lot, okay? But we might go back and reevaluate how we're doing things with our licensing on certain things, of IT's related things to try to change, you know, costs, to try to reduce costs. So the most of that is pretty much fixed.
And I think you mentioned earlier, but, so, because whenever there's a new building, there's always additional expenses that come up, but you're saying pretty much, if I remember right, that, that pretty much is done on your end, the new courthouse.
All of those special projects that I would throw out there every year and ask for, like rewiring the courthouse, I've been doing that.
Right.
This year, I've got none of that on the radar, that's done, awesome, yeah.
That's done.
Okay. I'm just gonna pay bills for those. In fact, here, I'll tell you what, if you look at my sheet, if you wanna see a little bit of the impact, if you look at those green ones on the right-hand side, okay? If you look at the categories, you can see which ones tend to be able to potentially have surpluses related to them, and which ones don't, okay? And the capital one is one that sometimes we can do, because either, a few years ago, before twenty twenty-four, the sheriff's department, Mick Newton, got a grant to pay for all their laptops in their vehicles, okay? So when that opportunity comes along, you jump on it, right? And that year, you've got a surplus and it goes back to county general, but that doesn't happen all the time. But we do try to find opportunities where, you know, we know what a PC, what, if I go to Dell and say, I need a PC with this specs, it'll tell, it'll tell me that's what it is, but if I can get it at some point in time cheaper, then I will. And I try to build up that surplus, so we always have some room. We also recycle an awful lot of our computing equipment. You know, we replace new computers every four years, but we have a lot of computers in this network that are seven years old, because they're going to secondary use. Sheriff's Department, they got new computers in their vehicles, but they've got an older computer for the desktop in the squad room, because they wanna have a separate computer. So we recycle one that's basically at the end of the normal lifespan and use it in a place where it doesn't get as much use. And then that's why we have certain maintenance for parts and things like that, to keep those things running. So, and we try to do that everywhere we can, and when they get to the point where we figure they're no longer worth it, or we don't really have a home for them, that's when you see the garage sale messages going out, we try to get rid of the equipment that way. So we have, don't have to pay as much to get it disposed of.
Refresh my memory on the communication services today.
Internet, telephone, and, and in fact.
Okay, that's all that's in there, catch-all for all of us.
And in fact, I've been fighting with Frontier, well, I was fighting with Frontier for several months, and now I'm dealing with Indigital, trying to get them to stop using the Frontier circuit, because we don't need it for anything but outgoing long-distance for dispatch, and it's fourteen hundred bucks a month, okay? And, but, they have to configure their system to be able to make outgoing calls from their dispatch consoles, so we're working through that. But other than that, we got rid of long-distance, what was our bill last month, do you know?
I'm not off the top of my head.
Small, I was trying to compare, I mean, we were paying seven, eight hundred dollars a month for long-distance, and now it's like a hundred or less, and it'll be zero when we're done. So, I mean, we are trying to do everything we can to drive cost out of this and keep our communications up. I cover about a dozen and a half cell phones, a cell phone service for different county offices. Some of the highway, all the, all the drivers and people like that, not their on-the-vehicle A T L, but that. There's a prosecutor's got a phone, I mean, there's like phones that smatter and there are phones here and there, and we've got two or three plus, I've got a couple of hotspots we use for election and things like that, so that's the other cellular, cellular communications in there as well. Service contracts is really what we pay to any vendor, mostly we go for the service on our copier, printer, stuff like that.
That's a hard, that's a hard number as well.
It, more or less, yeah, I mean, I mean, it, because the usage goes up and down, if you look, the amount of surplus, I try to, try to make sure we're within ten percent of what we're gonna hit at the end. So if you look at the other years. Now, this year, it's interesting, because I show a higher surplus for twenty twenty-five, why is that? I don't know why that is. But again, that's a projection, that's saying based on where we are now, where we'll end up, I don't, I'm not sure why that is, I'll have to go back and look. But that's, I just looked at the actual expenditures, it could be because we haven't got the last round of invoices from Rico that we'll get in the next quarter, which will be a thirty-four thousand dollars. So that's probably maybe why it is, like, just be tied to payments and things. Okay.
For the computer hardware software?
Yep.
Maybe I missed the question, but.
About forty-four, forty-four, forty-four thousand?
Come again?
Which category?
Mine says zero, mine, so I don't know, forty-four thousand.
Forty-four thousand, yeah.
Do you have specific compute, like, stuff you're targeting to purchase, gonna reach the one seventy-eight?
Yep. Every year, we go through and we take twenty-five percent of our fleet, and we figure out who is gonna have their computers replaced, and we calculate how many workstations there are, we take the cost per workstation, including the Microsoft Office licensing, goes in the spreadsheet, that's where that comes from, that, plus the number of printers that we may have to buy. So, yeah, everyone to see this, I'll watch it through every single detail, this is why I had to be careful, because if we don't put something in the right column and it doesn't get added and miss it, this is gonna pay for the long.
I know, so I'm scared we need to cut that.
Yeah, so, and part of it too is also, there is some cyclic nature to some things. Like, we may buy more copiers in one year than another year, because we buy copiers, we don't lease them, it's more cost-effective for us to buy them, and we keep them for like six or seven years or longer, depending on the conversation. A lot of people like leasing, because it looks real easy, I just write the same check every month. Problem is, you don't realize you're writing a check for more than you need to, every month. And I've really fought against that, I, I don't mind managing that variability if we have to. To me, I look at the bottom line every year and go, how are we doing on year-to-year? And if things move from one category to another, it may be just the natural fluctuations. Furniture and equipment is if we need a cabinet, or we need a two-car or something like that, or two-hand carts are kind of picking up, from all the moving stuff. And then, you know, there's nothing in other capital projects, because I didn't ask for anything this year. So the bottom line here is, it looks like it's about ten percent increase, and again, I think the significant portion of that's coming from things that I have very low control over. The cost of computers is going up more than three percent, because of the tariffs and stuff like that. It is gonna affect, it's not affecting it as much as, you know, the media would have you believe, but it's more than three percent, we're seeing cost increases. And we're also seeing where we used to buy a lot of computers from Dell's outlet, and now they've tried to reduce the costs that we get in terms of government program, and their outlet inventory's thinned out a ton, and so we're actually more likely to buy directly through a government program and through their outlet. But in the past, that wasn't the case, in the past, we tend to buy the outlet, because we could save another ten or fifteen percent for a computer. This is cost structures. All right, if you go across left to right, you can sort of see the percent changes and things like that, which are interesting. But I just wanna point out the last two columns, because I think that's, ultimately, this is the measure of what we're up to. In twenty twenty-four, which we have all the actual numbers for, the actual expenditure that year was seven hundred and three, six fifty-four, and we turned a hundred and six thousand dollars back to the county, county general. So one of the things I just wanted to remind you is, if we can do, we do it, and a lot of times, that turnback doesn't get applied back to us for office.
But it's not actually cash.
Yeah, it is, it's unexpended.
Well, it's cash from a, it's a cash that goes back into the tunnel.
Yeah, they basically, they got the revenue from the taxes and we didn't spend it, so it's.
Right, but it doesn't go back to any department, it becomes part of the department.
No, it doesn't back up, that's very, no, it doesn't back up, I mean, we don't give.
Yeah, that's not how I always look at it, that, that's just.
Right, yeah, but, but my point is, it was, that was, that much less than what you told us we could spend, than we spent, I think.
What you're talking about, uh, Casey, is if you, you're budgeting the money, and it's approved by the county, and it's approved by the state, then the anticipation is that you're spending, spending that money, but, but it is nice to.
Yeah, I mean. I understand.
And I want you to know, because we figure budgets on an eighteen-month cycle, when they don't spend it, that just increases our bottom dollar, so it makes our, our cash balance better.
Thank you.
Yeah, but again, again, the point here is, because we have enough variability, some categories will be better, some are worse. The only thing I will take pride in is I have never, not in my time here, ever come to council and asked for an additional for my department, ever. And I swear, I will not do that.
Well, I just.
I, for the first time, I am next month, okay?
I've just, I've just gotta make you, I've gotta make you comment, though, Dave, this is the first time that I can remember that you presented your budget and, and then said, well, I've got this dollar amount here, but I'm gonna go ahead and give this to, or take this out or something like that, which tells me that the budget is getting leaner and more.
Oh, it is, I mean, look, you know, like I said, we know there's variability, and if, because you're gonna see that that surplus number goes up and down, and sometimes it's because we get in with something nobody expected, right? Some department all of a sudden adds people and then you need equipment, which is something we never calculate. Just like when we say the salary's X, and we don't calculate the perfect impact and stuff like that to my budget. You know, I mean, those things are being paid somewhere else, so it's a tax, if you will, we get taxed every time people add headcount. And, and nobody tells us at all, or ahead of time, they're gonna hire people, in fact, sometimes they tell us the data they're drawing in, but we, I find out, because we posted a job, but, you know, so we don't have any way of predicting that, and so that's why having a certain amount of flexibility in there, I appreciate being able to do that. The other thing is, the sheets that you have, I get confused on them, because what we asked for at the beginning of the year, in terms of what's in each of those buckets, is not what's in those buckets at the end, because we moved money between budgets to try to offset from one to the other. So the percentage differences on each line, I, it don't make any sense sometimes, people like, well, why did that one do that? Because we moved money to another budget, because we didn't wanna borrow one piece of stuff.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, so, but that's why I say, look at the bottom line, I would say, look at the bottom of how much we're spending and what we're trying to get done, and how we try, and we're trying to get stewards of the money to say, look, nobody here is running Windows XP on a computer, nobody's, I mean, we all have old crap running around here, I mean, yeah, we ask sometimes, people who keep their older machines a little bit longer, you know, do you really need that, but in general, we have good equipment.
What I appreciate, Dave, is what Trey asks, is your plan matches what you're asking for.
That's, I always try to do it that way, I did last year, I asked for more money for my people, I'm doing it this year, I will always try to tell you what I think it takes to do this job, and then if you tell me it's gonna take less, and I'll try to figure out where to get it out. I don't like doing that, because it tends to be lean, it really does. Any other questions, Dave? Can I, can I do a real quick thing at the end, sir? I'm gonna talk about it for five minutes, I promise, only five. I gave you five different places where AI is gonna kick in. How many of you have seen Google Translate? Ever used it, anybody? It is the coolest thing since sliced bread. You talk to your phone and you say, I didn't understand what you just told me, can you tell me how to find the nearest gas station? And five seconds later, in text, and if you push a button, it will speak it in Spanish, five seconds later. This is like Star Trek and the Universal Translator stuff, okay? That's all made possible because of, by AI. AI, these large language models, have made it possible. It used to be that speech to text was awful, you remember? And our phone system a few years back, when you could get a voice message and the text made no sense at all. Now it's almost perfect, because of AI, there's one, and every one of you has access to it, some of you may use it. Any of you guys ever use the, you record your voice and give you a transcript? We could be doing that, by the way, with YouTube streaming.
Here's what AI made for our committee.
Yeah, graphics, I mean, you don't need to hire a designer anymore, you just, hey, draw me a picture.
Graphics.
My side, I use it all.
Okay, so yeah, so you see those kind of things, right? So I mean, but, but this whole real-time processing of information, okay, here's another one. Jen appuses me, I've got a two-and-a-half-hour video deposition of a client who was being interviewed, I use that word, interviewed, by the police, and I do not wanna watch two, what, don't wanna watch two-and-a-half hours of video to find the five minutes where he said something that I need to think about. How do you, how do you get past that? You stick somebody in front of you for two and a half hours, do you figure, because you gotta listen to all the words, you have no idea what he said, when he said it, nope. You feed it into a system, and I showed him, I did it with a video that I had, it was actually a class, and it literally created, creates a transcript in about three minutes. And then you search the transcript and say, okay, in this transcript, does this name or does this thing or any show up? And then you can go to that point in the video and listen to that point in the video. Hours, every one of those gets reduced, and we're doing it with surveillance and other things, okay? So not just something like that, and that's expensive time to have an attorney sitting there listening for two and a half hours to mostly stuff they don't care about, okay? Steve, the, not the current generation that we're getting in place for G I S, but the next version is gonna have AI in it, and here's what's gonna happen. You're gonna start to see a theme here in a minute, hopefully somebody you'll catch on real quick, so I don't have to say it out loud. You need a map that says, I need to know about something related to my neighborhood. I need to know all the property values of everybody in my neighborhood, and I wanna know what they paid in taxes last year, so that I can see if I'm being treated fairly or not. You're gonna be able to talk to your computer and say, that's what I need, and a minute later, you're gonna have that map. You're not gonna go to a Steve and say, I need you to create a map for me, Steve, that can do this and this, and he's gonna have to sit down and figure out the geo-processing rules, and pull that data, and then render it, make it look, and then you're getting the map, and you're gonna go, can you make these things a different color, can you make the fonts so that when I zoom in, they, they look bigger or they disappear? You're gonna talk to it, and it's gonna do that, and that's you as a citizen, not as a technical person, are gonna be able to do that, and that's not far off, okay? And you can just start to think of the power of what those things can do by the kind of questions you can ask. Have any of you ever used the conversational modes of like Gemini or Copilot, and just talk to it? If you haven't, I suggest you try it. Turn it on and just have a conversation with it, you're gonna be shocked. Not because it's smart, but because it communicates to you in natural language. So no more trying to figure out what words to put in a Google search to get something to come back, you literally talk to it. The first draft I made of the job description for my network administrator, I went to Gemini and I said, I want a job description for a network administrator, here are all the things I wanna make sure you include, da-da-da-da-da, and within two minutes, I had a document which then I could edit. Still had to have content put in it, but I didn't have to spend an hour and a half trying to figure out what I did the last time I take, I went, literally, the time savings alone is incredible, okay? Fourth, I like this, David, integration of involvement activity for law enforcement. Do you have any databases are out there that have information about somebody that you wanna know about, but currently you have no way of getting to it? AI is gonna take that away. If you can make your data visible, and that's one of the big challenges, is how do you make it visible, and how do you protect privacy and all this? And you insert it into these systems, you'll be able to check the movements of anybody who's touched the legal system anywhere to determine if they've intersected with something that you're interested in as part of an investigation. I know it sounds scary, if you're not doing bad things, it shouldn't sound too scary, but I mean, that's the kind of power these systems are gonna have. And it's not gonna require a bunch of fancy programming to find, how do you connect them, nope. It's just gonna be, here's your data set, hey, AI, tell me what's in that data set, and it's gonna go, hey, here's all the information it's got, then it's gonna say what's over there, okay, no, let's connect them together and tell me where they intersect. No, let's connect them together and tell me where they intersect. And you're gonna get that information, then it's gonna be like that. Last one, improved digitization of historical records. How many books do we have that we digitized, talked to the recorder about this, that were handwritten? And so what do we have for digitized versions of it? Scanned pages of handwritten documents. And most of them are not indexed, indexing means that you have an idea of what's on the page. Like this contains the records from this date to this date, or about these people, it's, we're called metadata. It's like you pull out some facts so you can find things through a search engine faster. AI is gonna take those handwritten pages and convert them to text, and it's gonna index them, it's gonna do all that. So no more of this having a page through all your old records that are handwritten. And it's gonna be able to do the same kind of thing with digital records themselves, because there's a lot of crap in digital records that isn't useful. It's gonna be able to say, you don't care about all that, but you care about this, and I'm gonna pull them all together and put it in a database. It's not gonna be done by clerical work. Do you see there's a theme going on here?
You never sleep?
No, I'm talking about the impact operations, the impact operations. The state of Indiana, if you haven't on their website, they got a little thing in the corner, little chat bar, says, how can I help you? There's no human being on the other end of that, and you say, I need to do such and such, and it will navigate you to where you need to be and ask questions. And there's no human being involved. I'm gonna say it, it's on the stream, I'm gonna say it anyway, in the next ten years, the structure of the employment in government is going to be completely different. There will be virtually no clerical workers in the next ten years. The government might be a little longer, because it's slower, but there will virtually be none. And it creates a bunch of challenges and opportunities and a lot of problems. Because you have workers who's are not built for this stuff. And they need to be able to work, and they're not gonna find those jobs like they used to. They've been in the Amazon facility. They have videos online, you can see them, or go down and ask if you can have a look inside their facility. They ain't that many people inside of the million-foot, million-square-foot facility. It's not like the bad days of warehousing where you'd have, you know, people riding four plus run into each other and all that, nope. It's all automated, have you seen nine-man pickers at Walmart? They actually go out on the shelf and pick stuff off the shelf. Right now, we got people doing it because people want us to do it. It's gonna change everything. And the only thing that that we can do about it is to plan for it and try to figure out how we're gonna structure ourselves to be able to adapt when it hits us. Because, I'll be honest, the citizenry will say, you can't afford to keep doing things the whole way, it costs too much. It just will. I mean, and so I think the challenge is, you know, just like we've had to do with cyber and other things, step back and say, where do we look like in five years or ten years? How do we best serve the citizens with this stuff? You know, and we can keep saying, no, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna do it, but I've said for a long time, I said, I don't know why we're worried about parking around this building. Why does anybody commit to this building to interact with us directly, except in rare cases? I mean, yeah, people wanna come here and pay in the taxes, but you know, the B of V avoided that whole problem because they started giving people incentives not to come in their buildings. You can do so much stuff online, because why? Because building costs money, and the people cost money, and the apartment costs money, and all that, and if a computer can do it, let it do it. It's faster, I rather punch rather than pay for my license plates in my pajamas. So I just put that out there, because I I think it's, it can be eye-opening. I've given you five things already that are being done now, and those are just pieces of a non-integrated picture.
Can I have a copy of that or just email?
You can have all the email too, this is, these are just my notes, I mean, I could have done a dozen things, and I thought, I just wanna give you a few. But I mean, I'm telling you, you know, if you think it's about getting rid of paper, it has nothing to do with it. It is not about paper, it is not about the internet, it's not about, we're we're far beyond that. Those are things like water and electricity, it's, they're there, use it if you need it, you don't, you don't. And we, the technical people, have to somehow start figuring out how we can educate and then help us navigate in this stuff, and so we have to get smarter earlier to try to help that filtering process. We, IT used to be, like, let's hear back in those days, we used to be computer deployment, my application doesn't work, my printer isn't working, can you give me another mouse? That was my life when I started here. That is nothing of what we do anymore, nothing. We are, if nothing else, it's our job to be collaborators, to be consultative, so that people like Shelley who need to get their work done, we can sit down and say, okay, here's what you're looking at. Here's what you got, and here's where it's going. How do you, how you gonna get that to work for your operation, how you gonna transition the operation to this thing? I mean, look at the, you know what pain we've had going through both changing timekeeping systems and doing claims?
Shelley, can you listen?
I'm listening about time.
I'm saying, you know what the pains we as ed users are going through, just with those little changes. And it's just gonna, it's gonna accelerate, so I mean, there's, there's a lot of things we have to look at how it impacts. But I just put that out there, because if you wonder what consumes us and keeps us up at night, Casey.
Yep.
That's what it is. It's how are we gonna do this? We can't just say, no, we're not going to, we don't have a choice. So that's that's my little pitch at the end.
Very good.
Thanks for listening.
Yeah, very good, very, time popped up.
Which one, this one, is that note?
It's for an email, yeah.
You can have that one, that's one email, copy of that one. Hey, by once, I'll email it to you. Okay.
Yeah, email, I'll take it.
I'll email a copy of that one, yeah, like I said, it was more notes, it was more notes than anything, but, because I didn't wanna build a whole presentation.
Yeah, very good.
Because two months, two months from now.
We wanna build one, send it to us.
Two months from now, it'll be wrong. All right, any notes, any prints?
No, thank you.
Oh, we know.
Because you already scared us old people off.
You you forget next, I'm one of you old people.
And seen that one.
But Gemini, who owns the rights of Gemini?
That's a Google thing, right, Alphabet, I mean.
And I don't pay for that, I've, I've, I'm eventually coming to.
No, I, well. You can get free stuff now, but if you wanna use the really powerful stuff, you end up having to pay for it. Yeah, if you wanna do some, like I was trying to do some sort of spreadsheets the other day, and I kept running into a problem, and it's like, no, I have to do this manually, I'll just work with some of this, but, so anyway. All right, well, if you got questions, everyone, and all you just wanna come down and see what we're up to, you're welcome. I give you an invitation to do that, and you just ring the doorbell, and you're here to go.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, a couple things, I wanna make a couple corrections. When you come back, um, Brandon, so pointed out to me that I hate Dave an hour and a half, you know, excuse me. Um, but for some reason, I messed up, so you don't really have anything now until after lunch. Um, when you come back from lunch, Superior Court Judge Claus will be taking also Circuit Court, because they don't have a full-time judge yet. I believe Judge Wallace and Jenny will come over, but Judge Claus will kinda take the lead on Circuit Court, they have not appointed a new judge yet.
So they're doing that, he's doing that all day?
At one fifteen, because he says, you know, and he's right, the court budgets are pretty simple.
Yeah.
Then when you get into probation, he'll stay here during the probation budget, which that might be where you have more questions.
So Circuit Court on a different day?
Circuit Court was at two o'clock today or something, so, but the nice thing is, when you get to Circuit Court, um, you'll just forget them, and if you have.
Yeah.
Judge Hagan might drop down a little bit, but probation always takes longer than you think it's gonna take, just because they have so many budgets.
Um, for discussion, do we need to, do we need to stay live through every part of this, I I mean, I'm not sure.
I think that like now, yes.
Okay, and that's fine, I mean, either way, I just wanna make sure we're doing it the way we're supposed to do it.
Right. Um, I wanna talk about Cube Courthouse just for a minute, we talked about, um, like the grounds here that replacing the mulch with the rock, and it'd be thirty thousand dollars. Cube Courthouse has almost five hundred thousand dollars in it. We've had minimal expenses, and a lot of them are to do with the courthouse that Glenn had given me, we've paid out of. I think maybe there's a couple things that were paid out of that Jackie might have sent through. No big dollar items at this point that I know of, I I'll look again at their budget when we get to that. That takes in roughly a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. We're not spending a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year in Cube Courthouse. Unless something's coming up that I don't know about, that the commissioners or them are gonna use for it, a payment plan, I don't know that though, okay, so I'm not saying that. Um, I think there's things that Glenn wants to do, like with the mulch, that you should pay for on a Cube Courthouse, let's match these buildings, let's get it out of, and and he's right, every year then, you're not paying sixteen grand to have these people come in and.
Clean it up.
Yeah, to clean up, so that, we did, Nicole looked those dollars up, so we did know that, um.
So will we, will we be correct in then just removing that sixteen thousand dollars, can we?
I don't know that I would remove the whole sixteen thousand dollars, but I would certainly talk about deleting a lot of it.
Well, I think he was gonna give some idea, wouldn't he, as far as.
If we have, he didn't, wasn't paying that company.
Right.
And I don't know, I mean, at one point, Glenn had talked about maybe he could do the the trim back stuff.
Uh, he said that, didn't he?
But the mulching is a few, I mean, they're bringing in twelve people and equipment to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So he would still have to hire somebody to do the stone and pull out the mulch and put it in the, the new area initially.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But then, once it's done, all they have to do is maintain for weeds.
Right, right, they can, and you know, sometimes we put new rocks in our river rock just to, not because Mark wants to, but I want to.
Crash it up.
Um, so I mean, the, yeah, I think that's a huge savings if you switch this out. And it kinda takes care of some of the bugs too, I think, I think mulch breeds bugs.
I think, I agree.
So, um, was that the only thing else we talked about? I I think that's something too, and I mean, we're on, you've already have one person that has a per diem that's come in that are raising their per diem.
Well, I think that's.
Um, I I think that you're gonna have a couple more of those that come in and wanna raise their per diem.
And as far as the per diem, when that was originally set up with Norman, I can't remember the other person, but.
Terry, it's always been Norman, Terry, and then Mike and Terry.
Terry. And so the flood plan, it is a big deal to to have somebody overseeing that. But my only thought is, I don't, I don't necessarily think rewriting an ordinance is another thousand dollars per person to do that. Because I think you've got the existing ordinance, you're just changing a couple things here in there, copy and paste, so to speak. To my opinion, I don't know that much, because I know it's gonna get tight when I have to take a harder look at the budgets, but.
And you know, it'll be a one-year thing that you're doing, and then after that, it's that you don't have to worry about, it's not an additional duty every single year.
Right.
Then we're opening a can of worms again for everybody else for, yeah.
Right.
And they do more, but, yeah.
Well, the way I can.
I want you to know, it's eleven twenty-five, you don't have anything back here until one fifteen. Because I could have put one more person in your morning budget and I didn't. Next year, Nicole will be doing this, just because she wants to know how, so.
So let's go ahead and break for lunch.
I think you can break for lunch if that's what you wanna do, I want you to.
This is the longest cruise we've ever had, twenty years, seven.
So you'll thank me, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Don't have to.
He's like you were scrambling.
You you don't have to suck it down and run. Um, one ten's.
Can you get a hold of Klaus and time to cover up?
Yeah, but that's gonna be a problem when you get into the courts.
Okay.
They've either got a morning thing, or and they all have one o'clock, so anybody that was arrested is a one o'clock to them, so. Um, one ten is open, the Mexican place is open, the Pizza Depot is open today on Tuesday, and if you're walking, and the Fox Den, the Fox Den, you'd have trouble finding a room to sit, but they do make a nice soup and sandwich. But they don't, it's not really huge, so, but that's what's open today.
Okay.
Just for your, shut the door.
Uh, real quick, was the problem resolved with Teresa and Dave on the credit card and the program?
I thought. Not really, but, so I know what Dave's saying.